Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, August 9th. It is 4:30. We have a full dais. I'm calling the executive session to order. We will be going into executive session on the following item. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 regarding the personnel matter of recruiting a new city manager. It is 4:31 and we are in executive session. All right. It is 5:53. We are back in regular session. There will be no actions taken as a result of executive session. So it is 5:53 and we are in recess and will remain in recess until 6:30 when we will start our regular meeting. We are in recess. Thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 9th. It is 6:30. We have a full dais and I am calling this meeting to order. The first item of business is we will be saying the Pledge of Legions to both the Texas and the US flag. And you will see that tonight, Trey Jobe, and it's Jobe, like the book and the Bible. It's not Job. He's already been called Job a couple times. It's Trey Jobe. And Trey has been the Assistant City Manager. He has been a dedicated employee with the city and has stepped into this position more than once and has done a great job. And we're appreciative of him doing that. And to show our appreciation, we've asked him to lead us in the pledges tonight. If you would please stand.
(inaudible)
Thank you. If you would please remain standing. The agenda says that Linda Sparks will be doing the invocation. But she, apparently moving, preparing to move, has some physical consequences. And we are very happy that her husband Cliff Sparks, who also serves as a police chaplain, has come and is going to take care of our invocation for us tonight. Chaplain Sparks?
Let us pray. Father God, we welcome you and we invite you to be here among us. We're grateful to you and we thank you for good government, for willing people to represent your will in this place, and for all the provision and love that you've blessed us with. Lord, just ask right now that you fill this place with your joy and every person here with your wisdom to know how to make the right decisions and do the things that are the best for this community, that things continue with peace and goodwill even as this community grows. And we thank you for all your prosperity you've blessed us with. In Jesus' name, amen.
You may be seated. All right, council, we're gonna, I'll let the audience know that we're gonna go through our mayor's report, council member reports, city manager report, and then we will be doing item 12B, and then we will be doing item 12A. So Colin, I have things before we get started. Before our next council meeting, there is a reception and book signing at the Bastrop County Museum. And Robbie Sanders has done a book on historic homes of Bastrop, Texas. So if you are interested in those historic homes, I would encourage you to participate at the museum. And it was really nice to know that Robbie's such a wealth of information and it's neat that she's gonna be sharing that with the public. I also got an email that it is migration season. And full migration is August 15th through November 30th, and the peak migration is September 5th through October 29th. The person that wrote, I did not realize this, and Ms. Fossler said that she herded the birders. She wasn't the bird expert, so she wasn't going to speak on that tonight. But if you have a bunch of unnecessary lights on in your backyard, you can mess up the bird migration. We're a bird city. We are a, we're a dark skies. That's why our public works. We have lights that shine straight down. The government telling you whether or not you can have string lights in your backyard is not a conversation that we want to have. But sometimes folks would turn them off if they knew during that time that they were impacting the bird migration. So just for you to be aware, it starts on August 15th and it goes through November 30th. With that, Colin, we can go to the first page. We'll start in the upper left hand. I had shared with you guys at our last council meeting that the Saturday before was the library end of summer. There's a picture of me with our librarian Bonnie Pearson, and they just had an outstanding time. Over 1.7 million minutes were read during the summer library program. And I had to include the picture of the obstacle course through the center of the book aisles. There were a couple of kids that just kept doing it over and over and over. They were having so, so very much fun. Right next to that, you'll see a picture that you have not seen before. And that is in May, when Smithville and Elgin elected female mayors, for the very first time Bastrop County has three female mayors in the three ci, in the three cities. And Judge Poppy, I always, I never know how to feel about that because I had nothing to do with making myself a female. But so I appreciate the applause. But we, the two of them were elected in May, but that was a picture, the first time all three of us were in the same room at the same time. So we wanted to mark that moment. And Judge Poppy, we were glad that he was there to be with us as well. Colin, if you go to the right, this is a bike rack that we dedicated. It is gonna be located right outside of the library. You'll notice that it's sort of, kinda, if you look at it the right way, looks like the old Iron Bridge. And there was a conversation about a bike rack. And I said, we ought to make it look like the old Iron Bridge. And kinda said it in passing. And then the next thing I knew, between the Rotary and TSTC, we got a bike rack that kinda looks like the old Iron Bridge. Those two students, really a very cool thing. The Rotary gave them a scholar, gave Alex a scholarship and wrote the check to TSTC. And he was working on getting his certifications, gonna start as a welder. And then the other young man is graduating and is going to start TSTC. And I hear he's a strong lead for being a recipient of a scholarship as well. But just a really neat way for the community to come together and make, let us know what you think about it. I think there's plans to have additional bike racks. And I, this one's at the library. And I know there was some discussion that the recreation center seemed like another logical place to have a bike rack. Then on the bottom left, Colin, the BISD did groundbreaking for two different elementary schools. And I didn't know I was gonna be in the picture. I don't always wear a dress to be in a groundbreaking with a shovel, but it just worked out that way that day. One of the schools is there by 5:35 and the other school is in the Colony. And both schools, when they open, will be at capacity. So we are a thriving, growing community, but it was neat to see those schools getting started. And then Colin, on the bottom right, is the sweet, one of the sweetest ladies in town, Aura Moore. Last year, she turned 90. And I wrote, we had a proclamation and her family invited me to her party for her 90th birthday. And this year, a couple days before the party, her daughter, one of her daughters called and said, Mom's already asking, is the mayor coming by? Because I wanna see her again. Is there any way you can come by? And so I took her a key to the city. And her grandson, Scott Moore, is recently the city manager at Maynor. And just, I know many of us know folks that are associated with the Moore family. And I only, I hope to be in as good a condition as Ms. Moore is at the age of 91. She is a lovely, lovely person, and I've enjoyed getting to know her. All right, Colin, these are the things, next page, these are the things I was planning on doing from when I turned in my report to the ninth. The special meeting on August 4th was canceled, and that is why we did executive session at 4:30 today. So I didn't do that. But it's not because I didn't show up. It was because the meeting got canceled. Farm Street Opry was a blast. There was a lot of dancing going on. If you have not made it to Farm Street Opry, please mark the first Thursday. And several of us were at the, on the homecoming parade float. Thank you, Lord, for cloud cover. It makes all the difference in the world, doesn't it, Council Member Lee? We were not melting. Gravity District Ribbon Cutting, I was at that this afternoon. And that is a really neat new business that's in the Hunter's Crossing area. And I'll have pictures of that later. And then on the next slide, you will see that I'll be fairly busy between now and our next council meeting. I won't go through all of that, but I will highlight, council, that we have a budget workshop on the 16th. And if needed, we will have one on the 17th as well. I believe you're aware of most of those. And I am very much looking forward to Mount Rose's 136th anniversary. I'll be attending church with them on the 21st. With that, speaking of Councilmember Lee, let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Good evening, everyone. So I have been spending some time doing some online training. I finished the Open Meetings Act with TML as well as the Public Information's Request. So I continue to find time when I can to visit that website and do some of that training. We actually are going to be going to newly elected orientation this weekend. So I'm looking forward to that as well. I did the Farm Street Opry as well. I was good to, I liked the Farm Street Opry. I just like music. So most people have a good time with, with the country music. It's that old Patsy Cline era type of music. And, and then we also kind of did a little retirement thing for Paul Hoffman. So I enjoyed seeing him off as well. I did the First Friday Book Bash. Some of you may not know that I published a little thing called a book back in 2019. And they invited me to come and take part in that First Friday event and had a good time. I know Councilmember Plunkett and Kirkland came. I don't remember seeing Councilmember Crouch. Did I see? No. So yeah, they came and stopped by. A bunch of people stopped by. And it was, I think what I liked most about it, one, is it kinda got me back to thinking about doing something with my book. But two, I met so many people that have moved to Bastrop from all parts of the country to live in little old Bastrop. Some people had just moved there like a week. And walking distance, our walkability is working. So that, to me, was the best part. It's just meeting all the different people that are new to our city and introducing them to everything that's in our city. I did the homecoming. I have not done, we were, me and a friend were trying to remember when was the last time I participated in the homecoming. And I think it was our 25th high school reunion. And we are past 30 now. So I think that was, that was the last time I had been. I can't remember being at the rodeo since I was probably eight. And I had so much fun at the rodeo. I went both nights. We listened to bands both nights. We ate. We looked at the booths. I really had a good time. I'm hoping they bring the carnival back for next year. But I hope next year you'll make plans to go to the rodeo. It was a good time. And then that's it. That's what I've done this past two weeks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Plunkett, what would you like to share this evening?
Just that I wanted to reiterate, the crowds for First Friday were really good. I was, I can't wait till they get started on the book. And, and then homecoming was great to see all the people back in town. And, you know, we had a booming business and everything was great. So, and look forward to the newly elected orientation that we're going to, I guess, for Thursday and Friday.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Well, I'm glad I don't have to go to the newly elected conference again. I'm, I'm with Councilmember Plunkett. The weekend was great where there was tons of people in town. I did want to remind everybody that school's starting pretty soon. So watch out for those school zones. Get those kids ready in case we, in case you don't have any little ones at home, thank goodness like me, I'll forget. So get ready for school to start. And that was a pretty good time.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Councilmember Crouch?
Let's see, I got to ride and sweat with everybody in the parade. That was a lot of, a lot of fun on Saturday. There was a little breeze at Farm and Main Street when the intersection, so the air could go through. But other than that, it was pretty hot. It was a lot of fun. I participated with the Main Street Board. I've been biking our new River Loop. So I'm excited for that opening, so everybody can do that. And it's 1.7 miles long is what I, I'm not sure if that's official or not, but on my thing, it's official. And the book, I had no idea Councilmember Lee had written a book. And, or Robbie Sanders, and she's my next door neighbor. So I would love to get Councilmember Lee's book and Robbie Sanders' book and put it with my Ken Kessler's book. So then I've got three Bastrop Arthurs on my shelf. And then the last thing, today was my grandson's first day of pre-K. And so congratulations to him. And today's my mother's birthday. So happy birthday to my, to my mom. And thank y'all.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Kirkland?
Certainly. So goodness, same list for the most part. Farm Street Opry, homecoming, going to the TML New City Leaders Conference. And I purchased Councilperson Lee's book. That's it.
All right. I like it when we're all on the same page. All right, we are moving on to item 7C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor. This won't take too long. I also duplicated a lot of the information that you've talked about already. Colin, you can go to the next slide. Just wanted to take a moment to thank Paul Hoffman again. He emceed. It wasn't his last day, but it was really close to his last day. So he worked right up to the last moment. He's 39 years of service, and he did emcee the Opry. And I want to say a thank you to the staff because on top of putting on the Farm Street Opry, they also put together a small party for Paul. So thank you for the extra work. The Rotary Club, again, I think we've mentioned that, so we'll just move on past it. Try not to duplicate too much. But thank you to the Rotary Club for making that happen in the bike rack. Also wanted to say thank you to all the staff. And we had a great time Friday at the employee luncheon. Really was a good time. Again, thank you, council, for supporting that and making this a place that employees want to work. And then just have some pictures of homecoming because I know the guy that takes all the pictures. So thought you may want to admire them. And just again, say happy homecoming. There's our own Curtis Hancock, the Public Works Director. We actually wanted to get that in, who won the cornhole tournament, by the way. So that's it. That's all I have, Mayor. Oh, I take that back. I have some important information now. Sorry.
Now he's getting to the part that I said. You really ought to talk about that.
Yeah. So what you should have received in your bill was last month, if you, if you still are mailed a bill as an insert, it looks about the size of a sheet of paper. When you unfold it, it has a map on the back, and it talks about drowlimethanes. Drowlimethanes are a component that have to deal with chlorination. So when you chlorinate water, it creates drowlimethanes. And there are certain contaminant levels in there that are established. And what we did was send a notice out about that. Main part of my message here is if you don't get your bill mailed to you, you can still go to the portal and find that information. So it's there and available. And please feel free to call us if you have any questions. Again, just wanted to remind everybody about the ribbon cutting on August 11th, the budget workshops, again, that are actually the 16th and 17th, not the 6th. And then just some notable items that'll be on the next agenda. We'll be talking about the purchasing policy, financial management, investment, the Pearl River zoning, which we coming back, and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan Award. So lots of good things happening. Now I'm finished. Thank you. The water is safe to drink. Yes. And again, once you get that information, call if you have any questions.
All right. Thanks very much, Mr. Jobe. Council, as promised, we are gonna be moving to item 12B that is found in about the lower middle half of the page three of the agenda. And the item reads as follow, "Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-71 of the City of Bastrop, Texas conveying the Bastrop City Council's expectations and directives to the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board as requested by Councilmembers Kevin Plunkett and John Kirkland." Council, the way this is gonna work is I'm gonna give Councilmember Plunkett and then Councilmember Kirkland an opportunity to speak to their resolution. Then if there's anyone else on council that wants to speak, I'll, we'll allow that. And then I am at approximately 25 people that are signed up to speak. We will go through that. And then we'll entertain a motion after we've had an opportunity to hear from the community. So with that, Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah. At our last meeting, we passed a resolution to create a new advisory board. At the time, I expressed concern about the open-ended nature of the language of the resolution. However, there was assurance that the scope would be refined when the bylaws were adopted and subsequently approved by city council. And that made sense to me because all the boards that I've been on have bylaws. In the days following the vote, I learned from the mayor and the city attorney that there would be no bylaws for this, as many of the other boards and commissions are, do not have bylaws required. So therefore, after consider, careful consideration, I was left, in my estimation, with three options. First, at the next meeting, which would be this one, I could call for reconsideration, which would be justified by the fact that there would be no bylaws to give clear direction to the board so that it would be set up in a way that it could succeed. Secondly, I could call for repeal, which would eliminate the group before it even had a chance to get off the ground. I could have done nothing and wait for the board to step outside of what I believe would be a reasonable bounds, and then deal with it on a piecemeal basis. That seemed the least fair of all, because absent clear direction, the board would be justified in believing it was empowered to do things when it wasn't told that it couldn't. And finally, I came to what I believe to be the best course of action at this point, and which is to address the issues so that the board can get off to a good start and work with a clear direction from city council as to what is expected. A group of, a group with a well-defined set of expectations is much more likely to find success in achieving its goals than one with an overly broad charge and no clear reporting schedule. With the help of Councilmember Kirkland, we found the model for several Texas cities that have similar groups established. And we use those as a model with the help of the city attorney to draft the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes. So in the last council meeting, I voted against the formation of the DEI Advisory Board without additional comments. After that meeting, I received a call from the famous Carrie Fossler. And she admonished me for that choice. She said something along the lines of, you always put so much time and research into things that come before council to your positions. The people of Bastrop deserve to know what is on your heart, what's on your mind when you cast a vote, especially one that's as difficult as this one. I acknowledged to her that she was right. And I acknowledged the same to the entirety of Bastrop right here and now. I apologize for that choice. I made a mistake, an error, casting a vote and not explaining why. I was more concerned with the process going on in my own head and not focused on an explanation for that vote. I was wrong to do that. I own that. It'll never happen again. I can partially blame it on being new up here and not quite knowing what all my choices are, how to talk to things. And, but you know what? It's not gonna happen again. Many of you don't know me. You don't know my background. I grew up in Brownsville, Texas, on the border at the southern tip of Texas in a community that was 99.9% Hispanic. That's not an exaggeration. That's just what the math says. Virtually 100% of my friends growing up were Hispanic. I continue to have a heart for that community. And I retain many of those relationships to this day. We celebrated holidays that were unique to being down there. Cháro days, for instance, is the celebration of the friendship between Matamoros, Mexico and Brownsville, Texas. But one holiday we had no awareness of was Juneteenth. So this year, Councilperson Lee invited all of us to participate in the Juneteenth banquet, parade, and street party. It was there I heard stories from people who went to segregated high schools. I heard stories of the Hopewell Rosenwald School, and we celebrated its restoration. I've continued to seek out information about black history through personal stories and books recommended to me by community leaders. And I sought out a personal tour of the Kerr Community Center and Museum. I'm at a stage of learning where I take the time to ask about people's personal stories of racism and how it affected them in the past or affects them today. And I'm listening with all my might. I genuinely want to know more about race issues in our modern society and what I can do about them personally. And if you're out there and you're willing to share your story with me, I'm all in. At the last council meeting, I, I felt that Councilperson Lee did a superb job in setting up the background for the resolution in her presentation. I'm an engineer at work. I see a lot of presentations. And Councilperson Lee, I thought you did an exceptional job with the content, the quality of the slides, and with the spoken delivery of it. I mean, it, I don't, I don't know that you do this professionally. Maybe you do. But it's as if you were well-practiced and it was exceptional. I was, I was proud of you. So I had some technical concerns about the board member selection criteria and whether it followed the rules in our city charter and code of ordinances. I was concerned about underrepresentation of some communities in the board. I felt that the rules governing the board were somewhat loose. They spoke enthusiastically about goals, but not about how those goals would be accomplished through the city manager, through the city council, and so on. In my research on this topic before that meeting, I had identified 15 cities in Texas that have similar boards and commissions created by their city councils. So some report to the city manager or mayor, and some are even full city departments. You know, if we're talking about a city with more than a million people, you know, they tend to have this in-house. Others, though, they're just like us, a community of our size. They have advisory committees to their city council. And I read every single foundational document for all of those cities. I hunted down resolutions, read every ordinance. And I have comments on how bad some cities' websites are to navigate. In this research, I found a wide range of features, if you will, of, of these different commissions. And, and I would, you know, call them from reasonable to perhaps extraordinary. And, and the reasonable end of this spectrum is represented by the cities of Saginaw, Hutto, Flugerville, Arlington, and Temple, Texas. Their DEI groups were founded by their council since 2020 as advisory boards to provide advice to their city councils on diversity and inclusion issues, both on demand because council needs some help with something, and via an annual report. They had focus areas specified, and council could ask them to look at other issues that were relevant to some specific situation that had come up. Each of these cities requested annual reports to be filed, most by January 31st. It actually became clear that they were copying from each other as they put together these resolutions. I've seen that, though. It's actually pretty common that, you know, when a city comes up with an idea, someone else will copy it. The resolution that passed in the last council meeting, it laid out the, from the DEI committee's perspective, what they hoped to accomplish. And it was, or it is, it's an honorable set of goals. And it left And it left open for, in my mind, the topic on how those goals would be accomplished. And so my conversations this week with some of the suggested members of the DEI committee, I saw their hearts as I shared mine with them, and I look forward to hearing the committee's recommendations as we move forward. So this takes us to the new resolution. While working with Mr. City Attorney over there on this resolution, I asked him to look at the Saginaw documents, and he came up with something that's similar to, to that, which is materially Saginaw, Flugerville, Hutto, and Temple. They're, they're the ones that use this, this particular model. And encourages the DEI group to work with the city manager for issues within their purview while writing an annual report for council on focused policy changes. It provides opportunities for council to ask for help on specific items. It establishes a path for budget formation, which wasn't in the prior resolution. It's an approach used by these various cities that lets Bastrop start up a new board, appoint individuals to it, start the work of filing agendas, and follow in the Texas Open Meetings Act, which, by the way, if you haven't done that before, you have no idea. Have conversations about shared experiences and provide recommendations to council on things Bastrop can do to address equity issues in our city. So in the, the resolution, we didn't mention a date for an annual report. Most of the cities use a January 31st. I think it would be appropriate to discuss in a moment what date could make sense. It should be early enough to have an effect on the budget process in case that's necessary. But in closing, I was wrong to vote no with no further discussion about my concerns. I put significant preparation time into all items before council, including this one. It was a rookie error to not share my heart, and from this day forward, you will always know why I voted for or against something, especially on difficult topics. Thank you.
Council member Crouch, you had asked.
Thank, thank you, Kevin and John, for, for that. John's very analytical and does a lot of background information and just shared a ton of it with you guys and explained why he voted no. I voted no to the resolution also for really the same, the same reasons, but from a different perspective, I think. I'm, I'm, I didn't think that we had a issue in Bastrop. I mean, I know there's a, everywhere you have issues, but I don't think we have a diversity, racism, because I don't see it and I don't feel it, and I don't, I just don't experience it. So I treat, I try to treat everybody with the same respect and conversation, no matter who you are, what color you are, or what your sexual orientation is. I think everybody, I treat everybody exactly the same. When I, when I first moved to Bastrop, a friend of mine came to my house, and it was right when we had our big floods, and he just asked me to come help a lady that had her house flooded and lived right down the street on MLK. And my wife and I said, sure, let us, show us where it's at. We didn't know that many people in town. We just went over there and helped the lady move everything out of her house. We pulled the floor out of her house. We put things back in her house so she could live in her house, and, but never thought at all about what color she was, what her, anything of the background. It just was another citizen in town that needed some help, and we went over there and, and helped her. And then since then, I've been, become friends with her and her grandkids. And so I just, I didn't, didn't see the, I don't see the issues that obviously there are, there are here. I'm not against the diversity and inclusiveness piece of the thing at all. I think that it, and I didn't realize how much work. I'd heard that it was 18 months that you guys have been working on that. I had no idea that you'd been working on it that long. So kudos for that, but, and maybe ignorance on my part that I didn't know you'd been working on it that long. But I felt the day we voted that the same thing that councilmember Kirkland felt, that I thought it was, went too fast, because I didn't know it had been 18 months in the making, and I thought it needed to work the same way as the other boards, with the, with the board members, the process that we have for selecting those people, and also the rules and regulations for it, the same thing. So that's why I voted against it initially, was just because of that, not because that I didn't think that we didn't need it and that everybody shouldn't be included in everything that we do with the city. I just, I don't see it like, I don't see that we have the problem that, from, from that perspective. And maybe I need to get out more and visit some more people, and I'm, I'm happy to do That's, that's really it. I just wanted to explain. I didn't explain that day either. We just voted, and I don't explain every vote that I, that I vote yes or no against. Sometimes we just vote. I, I did on that. I, I wish that I would explain some more, but that's my, that's my take on it from my perspective. I treat everybody the same. I think that everybody else does, and maybe that's naive on my part. I just don't see it. I grew up in a little bitty town and just the same size as Bastrop, and all, all of my friends from school, from elementary school on, have been my friends still, and I think of them no different from any race, sexual orientation, or anything else. So I just, that's why I voted no. I just wanted to explain that. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Crouch. Do you want to, council member Lee?
Mayor, I'd like to hold my response until after we hear citizens' comments, if that's okay.
Absolutely. All right. I'm, I am doing my very best to call them in the order that they were turned in, and I'm doing my very best to pronounce names. So I'm looking in advance for grace. If I don't do your name justice, it's not intentional. Amy Cook. Is Amy Cook here? And the way this works, if you did things online, I've got 15 online. Council has a printout of what you submitted online, and then I have right now, it looks like nine or 10 of folks that have signed up this evening. And Amy Cook wishes to speak in opposition, and council has a copy. The next person is Herb Goldsmith. He does not wish to speak, and his last sentence says, or his second to last sentence says, "I am neither for nor against this resolution. I'm just making observations." So I, I don't know how to put him down as for or against, but council has a copy of his observations. Jennifer Leisure does not wish to speak, but please record her preference as a support. And the next person is Kelly Dawson. She does not wish to speak, but she is in opposition to the resolution, and she has wrote out some comments, and council has a copy of those. The next person is Emily Bolt. Is Emily Bolt here? Emily wishes to speak in favor and in support of the resolution. The next person is Steve Chamberlain. Let me see, Mr. Chamber, Mr. Chamberlain would like to record his as opposed to the resolution. And the next person is Deanna Ferrera, does not wish to speak but is in support of the resolution. The next person is David Barrow. David Barrow wishes to speak in support of the resolution. Ellen Marie Tanner. She didn't complete what, the printout that I have doesn't say whether they're speaking or not speaking, and it's, she is in support of the resolution. The next person is Sonia Kote. Sonia does not wish to speak but is in support of the resolution. Stephanie White does not wish to speak. She is in opposition to the resolution. Robin Rick? Yes. Wishes to speak. Come on up. If you will say your name and your address, you will have three minutes.
Oh, I don't love microphones. My name's Robin Rick. Good evening, everybody. I live out in Cedar Creek, Texas, but sometimes I come to Bastrop because it's my county seat. It's where my family does most of our businesses. You have extraterritorial jurisdiction over the area that I do live in, so this is a real important town to me. So sometimes I, I step up and speak out on an issue or two. I really want to thank the members of the task force that put the information, that worked for 18 months to do the work on this, because they do it out of love for this city. And all of, all of the boards, the city boards are so impressive in Bastrop, and they keep it a beautiful place to be, a beautiful place to trade and live in. Anybody who puts that amount of time in loves their city. So I want to thank all of the task force members. And I want to thank council for having taken their informed, heavily informed and responsible recommendations last week and getting that passed, because I think it's very, very important. And I came to that from listening to members of the community. And over time, and I, you know, I've learned sometimes it's kind of hard for me to shut up and listen. And over these last couple of years in particular, I've learned so much from members of minority communities about how important these things are. So again, thank you for passage last week. That meant a lot, and I wasn't able to be here, but I wish I had been. And in listening to those informed decisions, that was important. All of our city committees, they come into, they've come in under the same set of rules, and I think they've been pretty successful under those sets of rules. If you look around, it's not a bad place, okay? So I'm speaking out in opposition to this tonight because I kind of feel like what I'm seeing is a different set of rules is being imposed on this particular committee. And I really don't like the thought that, especially this particular committee, would be operating under a whole different set of bylaws and rules than other committees are asked to operate under. I think you're kind of putting the brakes on them before they get started. If there are problems, they could certainly be addressed at a later time. But again, treating this particular committee differently is an absolute contradiction to the very mission of this particular committee to begin with. So let's, I feel like this committee that is going to task itself with obtaining equity deserves equity itself. So I'm speaking tonight in opposition to this particular resolution, and I thank you for listening tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rick. Jen Patton? Jen Patton wishes to speak in favor. Ms. Patton, are you in the room? Carrie Fossler, she's in the room. Ms. Fossler, if you'll please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street in Bastrop, Texas, and I'm changing my comments in the moment because on, online, when you submit comments, it says the mayor will read your name, address, and comments, and we didn't get that. So I'm wondering if the comments can be read. I know you can't respond to this, but I'm wondering if the comments that citizens made online can be read. Like, did we change that process?
They, and I can get some help from the city attorney. We were reading comments during COVID because people couldn't be in the building to speak. And so ever since the chambers have been reopened, we're not reading all of the comments, but council all has a copy of it.
Okay, well, it still says that on the website.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am speaking in support of the new resolution. I think it was well researched. I do have a, a recommendation, so I don't know if, under A advisory, it says recommendations shall be in the form of an annual written report to the city council and upon request by the city council or city manager. And that format seems very flat and in the past to me. For such a, and a very alive board, there's a bunch of momentum creating this board. There's obviously a lot of energy and enthusiasm for this. I think I question the format and the frequency. I think there needs to be a more alive feedback loop to incorporate what's going to happen. And I'm excited about it, and I really wish those comments could be read because people put a lot of comment, a lot of thought into this.
Thank you, Ms. Fossler. Ryan Holiday? Ryan Holiday wishes to speak in opposition to the item. Dustin Barti. Mr. Barti, if you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Dustin Barti, 1509 Hill Street. The Apostle Paul once wrote, "God is not fooled, for you reap whatever you sow." The great poet William Wordsworth said it this way, "Your mind is a garden, and your thoughts are the seeds. The harvest can either be flowers or weeds." In short, whatever you plant grows, and we have the choice of what to plant, what to grow. We can, if we want to plant seeds of fear, or suspicion, or assumption, or judgment, we can. And it should be no surprise when those small seeds grow and fill our gardens or fields for all to see. It's no longer a secret what we planted then. Whatever you plant grows. In the very same way, we have the choice to plant other seeds. We can plant seeds of respect, of trust, grace, and excitement. And as those small seeds grow, they can bring delight and enjoyment to everyone in the community, because whatever you plant grows. Now, this is a fairly newish council, and you have the wonderful opportunity to serve in our city's gardens. What types of seeds interest you personally? What types of seeds do you hope that we all carry as citizens? What types of seeds should our city be known for? Because whatever you plant grows. Finally, some in our community and perhaps even in this very room believe that racism and inequity don't really exist in our town because they haven't seen it directly or experienced it personally. I think that's kind of like saying you don't believe in burglary because it hasn't happened to your house, or even murder because it hasn't happened to anybody you know, or even tornadoes because you don't live in Kansas or Oklahoma. That's kind of a silly way to think, because it has happened. It continues to happen, and the questions remain. Are we listening? Do we believe what we hear when we hear the stories? And what are we willing to do about it? In closing, one poet offers us all a better way. Every leaf that grows will tell you. What you sow will bear fruit. So if you have any sense, my friend, don't plant anything but love. May we plant seeds of love to love our neighbor and love our city, because whatever we plant, we plant grows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barti. Carly Barti.
I love following that. My name is Carly Barti. I live at 1509 Hill Street. Adding on to say that this resolution is decent, and I'm glad to have a path forward, but it is ironic and noteworthy to have these added on. And I think there's probably some confusion in people that are saying in support or in opposition to this, and that's noting, I think people are probably in support of this board, and there may be confusion in the way that they're responding to this. But I have written at least three different versions of thoughts for this meeting, and what I'm sharing tonight is much different than the collection of words, than the other versions that I wrote out. But one common theme has appeared to me over the days since the last city council meeting two weeks ago, and it's about the power of assumptions. I was disappointed and surprised to hear two votes in opposition to the new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board without comments or questions. I quickly made assumptions about why that happened. In the past couple of days, I've spent several hours talking with the council members who voted no, and I heard the assumptions they also had made about this board, both small and significant. We did find common ground and share hopes for this board to have a positive influence on our city. It's disappointing to face resistance before we've even started working as a board, but here we are. This is a challenging and uncomfortable work to lean into. I hope we will move forward from here, remembering the power our assuming can have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barti. Steve, Stephen Kuz, Kuzinski? Pretty close?
No, that was on, on point.
All right.
Hi.
All right. If you will state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Stephen.
Stephen Kuzinski, thirty nine fifty Highway seventy one East, apartment nine fourteen. I come here today because my good friend Steve Chamberlain asked if I could be here to speak his comment to the public so the public can hear. Madam Mayor, City Manager, and honored council members, my name is Steve Chamberlain. My address is two thirty Oak Forest Drive, Cedar Creek, Texas, seven eight six one two. And I am a legislative liaison for Bastrop County Democratic Party. My duties of that position include staying informed of all the legislative issues and working to protect the good citizens of Bastrop County, which includes Bastrop city residents. In that capacity, I attended the July twenty sixth council meeting and spoke in favor of transitioning the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee into a permanent standing advisory board. After many submitted comments which were not read but entered as in favor of the board, my comments in favor and one speaker in opposition with no reasoning just that he was against the action. The council voted three to two to transition the committee to a standing advisory board. Now, as I understand it, there are members of the council attempting to set expectations for this board already established in Councilmember Lee's implementation plan. Add to that, this board will be held to the current procedure and ethics of the city. I also understand the voting history of the recommended member, members have come into question as to whether or not they should serve. Has the voting history of every board and commission been checked as well? Why is this board focused on minorities being treated differently in this process? At the very next meeting, you are trying to overturn the action taken to represent the minority population. You are making assumptions about this group instead of listening and understanding the purpose and mission that was presented to you. Their goals and objectives were already clear, and they are capable of carrying them out. From what has been explained to me, every member of the board was recommended because of their connections and service to the community, not because of their race or their party affiliation. Diversity is not just about race, it's about different backgrounds and experiences. And the different backgrounds and experiences of these individuals can only serve to help the city of Bastrop better connect with all of its residents, not just the select few. We are asking respectfully that the council deny this politically driven resolution and move forward with the action that you, the Bastrop City Council, legally enacted at your last meeting. Leave the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board intact as presented so that they can do good work they have been charged to do. Thank you for your time. Respectfully submitted by Steve R. Chamberlain.
Thank you very much. All right, the next person signed up to speak is Deana Eden. Ms. Eden, if you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Deana Eden, three eight two Ocaloa Drive. Diversity and inclusion initiatives may be new to some of the city council members, but it's not a new concept. Large corporations, large city councils have led these types of initiatives for many years now. Diversity covers minority communities, women, the LGBTQ community. It is my understanding that Resolution Seventy One was proposed to provide oversight or development of a work plan for the DEI board, whose members have already formed a plan and whose members reflect the very group they represent. If there's a need for the city council members or city manager to understand what diversity and inclusion boards do, I suggest attend training. There's plenty of it out there. In fact, if you're not part of the board, I think every city council member should attend diversity and inclusion training. I think standard processes should be followed, and additional oversights or plans by groups other than the DEI board are not necessary, and I am against the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person signed up to speak is Nelson Linder. Mr. Linder, if you'll please come forward and state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I am Nelson Linder, President of the Austin NAACP. I live at seventeen oh nine East Wall Street. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here tonight to help clarify the need for diversity, why it's really been happening all over the country. In Austin, Texas, across the street, we did one in two thousand and four, NAACP and civil organization, but we produce data first. When you see the data in these cities, median income, unemployment, healthcare, housing, there's clearly a racial gap. It's not based on individual experiences, it's based on systemic, sustained, endemic racism. These committees, to me, they're really cultural as well. They give you insight about what you can do to address these disparities that exist in this country today. So when you, you find unreadiness in these situations, it's already a sign of discontent. So I want to address that. Anybody thinking out of America, or spread to everybody, needs to take a look at the data again with an unbiased look. It's right here in your city. Medium income, life expectancy, healthcare, those things are racially based. So in closing, in Austin, we did it right. We gave folks a book of data so they could see, it's not about what you see, it's about people's life experiences and the fact that racism exists almost on every plateau. It's a scientific study, and it's very powerful. So I hope tonight you will, you will go back to the original idea as presented. It should be free of tampering, political interference, and control. That's another indication you have a problem because in two thousand and twenty-two, shouldn't we kind of try to control anybody? We're all human beings. If that's true, we have a right to define our own reality. And I would suspect and hope, as we go forward, and I've been here a lot of times, that you can look at the data, embrace the spirit of this committee because you need diversity. You need equal opportunity. You need culture awareness, and that creates the basis for unity and understanding. This is nothing to fear. In fact, they bring people closer together as human beings. So I challenge you, and I invite you, to step outside your own perspective and just look around you and do a sociological experiment, and it's very convincing. Councilmember Lee, thank you very much for your work. And all the folks here who want to support this committee intact without interference, you're doing a great thing. But if you want an example, look, look, Westfield Austin, studies that process. You got to read a lot of data, that's very disturbing, but I challenge you to do so. Thank you for your time. Please do the right thing, folks. Everybody's looking. I've been here a lot of times, and you have so many natural resources in this city. Share it with everybody. By the way, the folks who come to this part of Texas are also looking and watching. They call me all the time, Nelson, what's a good place to live? How about Bastrop? They're going to check the data. It's also a business decision as well. It's good for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Linder.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Sumai Lakumbe, if you would please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Sumai Lakumbe, five oh eight Cedar Street, Bastrop, Texas. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to come before you all and speak. Thank you, Cheryl. She put a lot of work into help forming this board. I was invited to join this committee by Reverend Jackson over a year ago. And we did spend a lot of time at the library, four thirty every last Monday of the month, with the city manager and with the assistant city manager. I just wanted to come forward and say, there's been, ever since we got appointed and our last city council meeting, it's just been a lot of disturbing things going on. I don't follow hearsay. I've been in this community for fifteen years. I've been serving this community as a volunteer for fifteen years. I joined this board not because of the color of my skin, not because of the way I vote, it's because of the passion I have for Bastrop and a passion I have for all people, not just one race of people, not just my people. So I wanted to come forward to say to anybody who have any issues with this board, what we're going to do, it's a new board, we don't, we, we still trying to work out the kinks. So give us the opportunity, work with us. Come with an open heart and a fair mind, and we can get some things done together. Bastrop is a place that, is a place that a lot of people are moving here, and we want everybody to feel like they belong here. We don't want different groups of people to feel excluded. The work that was put into this diversity plan took hours. It took hours meeting, it took emotion, and but with, like I said, with the, the help of Pastor Jackson who formed this and got, and, and said that, she called me personally, you joining this board. She didn't ask me, she told me. So that's how I got into this position. I'm for everybody, I'm for peace, I'm for, I'm for equality. I want us to build bridges so we can get rid of the gaps. And let's work together. The mayor had been doing a wonderful job. Before she got selected mayor, we worked out together, we sat on committees together. And no one thought she would make, to become mayor of Bastrop because she's not from here and she's a female. Ha, 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 look at us now. So let's continue to make people, to say to people, ha, 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 look at us now. Jimmy, you said you, you didn't know that we had issues here. My husband is a renowned, one of the best trumpet players in the country. He's one of the first black composers for major orchestra. He rode his bike across the bridge going to HEB to buy a watermelon. He get thrown, he got thrown by a pickup truck. They threw crackers at him and said, get off the road, nigger. That's where we live, and that's what this board is trying to change. We want equality for everyone, not for one race. So I, I reject whatever resolution that's trying to tamper with what we put together. And let's, this woman worked very hard to get this put together, and I say, let's pass, let's do what we have to do. Y'all come to these meetings. The, it's open to the public. If we doing something that you don't like, tell us, let's work on it together. Don't criticize us, and let's not, let's not create diverse, division in this community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lakumbe. All right. Jennifer Olson McEwen, if you'll please state your name and address, you will have three minutes.
Hello, council. I'm Jennifer Olson McEwen, a fellow resident of eleven years, and we've had a business in town just as long, from the day we got here. We have a storefront that's coming up on six-year anniversary downtown Bastrop. We're at one seven one The Roosevelt. I'd like to take this time to refresh the minds of everyone on the city of Bastrop's vision statement on the city's website. The vision of the city of Bastrop is to be welcoming community with a compassion for our diversity, a tapestry of people, arts, structures, preserving our history and character while embracing progress around our unique environment. If this is the vision of the city, I have concerns with a council who would vote against diversity, the presence of differences that may include race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, language, disability, age, or political perspectives. I have concerns with a council who would vote against equity or promoting justice, unbiased, and fairness within the procedures, processes, and distribution of resources by our city. I have concerns with a council who would vote against inclusion to ensure those that are diverse actually feel and genuinely are welcomed, so much so that the diverse individuals are able to participate fully in the decision-making processes and develop opportunities within our community. If we are to come together in this rich tapestry that the city envisions, we need to take into account the representation, representation and needs of all who live here. To believe we already have is shortsighted. There is room for improvement and growth as we continue to grow our city. By allowing the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board, as it was resolution brought forth, to help create dialogue between local government and community, we can truly say we are embracing progress around our unique environment as the vision states and as city council strives to serve all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McEwen. And y'all, I've been, it's a business meeting. We don't cheer, we don't boo, and, but I'm, I'm trying to give you some grace, but if you would please just respect that it, it's a business meeting. Mary Ellen Arbuckle, if you will please come forward and state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Well, that's hard to follow. I'm Mary Ellen Arbuckle. I live at fifteen oh two Fayette Street. Unfortunately, I didn't put down any comments, so you're going to have to go with my ad lib, which is not best. But when I read last week that this, that this had passed, I was so excited. And one of the things is, is when I moved to Bastrop, I moved here from Houston, from a very diverse neighborhood in the Heights. And when I moved here, one of the things that I noticed right off the bat was that our workforce, our city workforce was very, very single-colored. And I noticed that quite, not only in the city workforce, but all around us, and yet I noticed that we have a lot of diversity in our community. So I started wondering why that is. I know I even spoke to you about it one time, you know, years ago. I even started a Facebook page called Bastrop for All because I wanted to start taking pictures of the diversity that we did have, and I ended up closing it down because I couldn't find any. The only place I really found somebody of color in a professional position was at Sherwood Williams, and his manager wouldn't let me take his picture. That's been one of the hardest things for me moving here is, because it's very important to me. I don't know why I grew up in a white, white, you know, upper-class neighborhood or whatever, and, and, but for whatever reason, well, because I'm human, and I like, I believe in the equality of, of all of us. And I would like to see our community look in its professional and workplaces the same way as it does out in the streets, out, you know, in, in our neighborhoods. I worked for an accounting firm in the early nineties, and I was tasked with hiring a new file clerk. And I was tasked with the controller of the company, and we went and we, we were told to pick three people to bring back to my boss, who was pretty well-known racist. And we picked three, and one of the women was black, she was a young girl. And so when I was talking to the controller about who we were going to bring over, I said, well, let's bring so-and-so, so-and-so, and, and Goldie. Don't you think Paul will get mad if we bring him a black person? And I said, well, if he does, I'm not here to correct his feelings. He, if he's going to discriminate, he has to do it himself. So there are people who, you know, there are people who keep people from getting jobs, and I know that that's happened here as well. Goldie was hired. My boss asked me which one I would choose, and I would choose her. She was hired, and she worked her way up from a file clerk to being a controller of the company for years, and very, very much loved. We all have a place in writing the diversity, equity, and inclusion in our communities, in our workplaces, and everywhere that we are. And I take that very seriously, and I'm so glad that you guys passed that last week, or two weeks ago, but I am opposed to this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Arbuckle, Madeline Eden, if you'll please come forward and state your name and address, you will have three minutes.
My name is Madeline Eden. I live at three eighty-two Ocaloa Drive in Bastrop, Texas. I would just like to start off by commending the members of the task force and the esteemed members of the council and the mayor for the formation of these, of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. This is a huge milestone for the city of Bastrop, and it's one that, you know, hasn't gone unnoticed. This is important to people such as myself for a lot of different reasons. Generally speaking, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a huge tent, right? It's, it's a very big concept, and it's one that everybody really should get behind. Nobody in the city of Bastrop wants to be the member of the council who decided that diversity, equity, and inclusion was a bad concept that they didn't want to vote for, and they didn't support a committee that ensured that it was fostered in this city. The idea that racism, or exclusion, or discrimination doesn't exist in, in this city, in this county is, is, is very shortsighted. And, you know, I've, I've heard stories about incidents like the one that Sumai mentioned. But I mean, I can, I can speak to, you know, less than a month and a half ago, we held a Pride Festival here in Bastrop for the very first time. I'm a member of the Pride Board. And one of the events that we attempted to host in the city of Bastrop, we were unable to host because of threats and attacks that occurred on businesses who agreed to act as venues for that event. And that type of discrimination is, it's alive and well right here. And so a committee like this helps ensure that, that everybody is included, right? And this is going to be important as y'all grow. You see it in Austin, right? Every major corporation has a diversity, equity, and inclusion group, right? They keep that stuff in-house, they act like a city almost in, in that sense. You go to Dell, you go to AMD, you go to Tesla, these are all very important concepts. And if you don't understand them, you really should read up on them, you should do the research. I, I think, I'm not entirely opposed to the resolution that was presented by council. I think councilmember Strickland put a lot of thought into it. But at the same time, I would urge caution and restraint in attempting to impose additional limitations or oversight on this council or its initial charter. And in that regard, I am opposed to this resolution. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anthony Brown. Anthony Brown. I think I, is that, did I say it right? I think that... What do you think that says? Okay. Is, it's, please record as opposition. Madam Secretary, I think, I don't think I've skipped anybody. Do you have anybody else on the list?
No, mayor, do not.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak? Councilmember Lee, you had asked.
Thank you, mayor. And thanks, thanks, everyone, for, I love citizens' comments, opposed, yea, nay. I just love to hear people's points of view. So thank you all for taking time out of your day to be present at our council meeting. To Carly, I read through all of the resident, all of the online citizens' comments, and you're correct. The, the majority of the oppositions were in opposition to the resolution itself, not the board. So thank you for making that point. I wanna start out by pointing out one of our three focus areas, right there on that board over there. The third one down says Economic Vitality in Its States. Create Sustainability by Leveraging Tourism, Infrastructure Renewal and Investment, Enhancing Public and Private Partnerships, Efficient Planning and Development Processes, and Fostering an Inclusive and Diversive Environment That Encourages Entrepreneurial Ventures. I have read that multiple times in multiple workshops. I was standing in my living room, and I keep the paper copy on my work desk. And I was standing in my living room, and I just happened to look down at that paper this week, and that, that point caught my eye. Never really thought about it in this whole year, two years that we've been working on this, but in that moment, I was like, wow. That is what we are trying to do, is promote diversity and inclusion in this community. We, as council members, took an oath to uphold those focus areas and make sure that as a council body, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we are fulfilling those focus areas. So to have been met with so much opposition, to say the least, has been disappointing. I find it interesting, since even before I got on council, individuals have spent a lot of time on this dais, trying to get around parameters that the city has set. And in this particular case, we're now trying to set parameters that are not required of other boards. It's been said that this board was rushed, and we didn't, we didn't follow the process. No, we followed the process, but no one took the time to ask what process we followed. So what I would like to do, because I feel like if what's being said in the community reflects poorly on the integrity of council, I wanna make sure that the public understands what that process was. I have some questions for Rebecca. I'm sorry to kinda surprise you, but Rebecca was very involved in the task force committee along with the city manager, Paul Hoffman, at the time, Curtis Hancock, our public's work director was involved, Chief Nagy was present, Tanya Cantrell was at every meeting. So we discussed at length within the task force issues that minorities face in this community. We, I covered some of those milestones in the last meeting, and I feel like that was not even looked at, the work that had already been done and accomplished just in the task force committee before the thought of a board was even considered. So Rebecca, Rebecca met with the, with the committee multiple times. And you met with the individuals that are being recommended to serve on the board. And these members were recommended, they haven't been appointed. They, the mayor appoints board members. When we, when it was decided to, to make it a board, we thought long and hard about people that were already involved in the community. We tried to reach as many demographics as we could. We racked our brains trying to figure out how we could bring someone on of, in the Hispanic community. Everyone that we thought of lived out in the county. We welcome everyone to participate and be part of this board, but the members that are being recommended directly have connections down every street in this community. And that is the type of board that we need. We need to be able to reach every group that is in this community. So Rebecca, prior to the July 26th meeting, you met with the members that are being recommended, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the purpose of that meeting?
It was to discuss how we go about and do board formation. So for the formation of this board, we followed the same process we followed for the last board we created, which was the Cultural Arts Commission. And we mentioned that here is the process by which we follow to create a new board. We went through that once council creates the board with the recommended implementation plan, that the board members apply, and then we bring them back for official confirmation. On the Cultural Arts Commission, we also had that the task force recommended members for the mayor to consider in her appointment of the board members. So that is what the task force did, was they put together a list of names that they thought would serve the mission well, to recommend the mayor for confirmation, which would have been done at a subsequent council meeting. And then the Cultural Arts Commission had a, the Cultural Arts Master Plan to work off of. And so we had discussed at that first meeting that we don't have a guiding document such as that, but we do have this implementation plan. And so we would spend the next several months, two year, it took the Cultural Arts Commission a year to build a work plan. And then that would come back to council because all of our boards and commissions, they are really representatives of the city who are tasked by council to undertake and go forth and forward the mission of the city and council, given to us through the comprehensive plan, our nine focus areas, our master plans. So they would dig into all of that and come back and say, this is what we've determined we think we should work on. What do you think, council? So we talked through the fact that that would kind of be the next several months to a year that we would be digging into things and figuring out what our work plan would be. And it's typically a multi-year work plan, anywhere from two to five years, that would be brought back to council to be reviewed and looked at. And so that's typically how we go about the creation of a new board.
So, and the members being recommended clearly understood that they would not be able to just come in and plan and organize and do what they wanted to do. That would have to be discussed with the staff liaison and approved by council, correct?
Correct. That's, each of our boards and commissions have a staff liaison, and it's really the staff liaison's role to be a resource for that board, to help them understand what their role is and kind of help them understand where the boundaries are, what they should be working on, what they should be spending time on, and then be the conduit to get that work plan in front of council, or get that budget request in front of council. That's the role of the staff liaison, is to be that resource and conduit.
Did you, what is your understanding of what this board, or what these members, recommended members would want, would want to accomplish in this community?
So I knew many of the recommended board members simply because they owned a downtown business, or they are a part of an organization that I've, I am also a part of, or that I've gotten to volunteer with. And so it, just my humble opinion, that is not based on anything other than what I know about them, they're, they've all, they're all very hardworking, very passionate, and loving community members who serve the community in other places in different ways. So I think they came to the table already having a heart of service, and so they seemed excited for the opportunity, and they seemed hopeful that this would be a great way to really create some unity.
And did you talk to them about what rules or procedures they would have to follow serving on a city board?
Yes. So we talked about, all of our boards follow, fall under the rules and procedures that city council sets. And so we let them know that they would fall under those rules and procedures. Boards do have the opportunity to enact additional bylaws. They don't have to. We try to stay away from it if not necessary because it creates confusion since our rules and procedures are set by ordinance. So normally, our boards that require bylaws by accreditation standards, or by law, are the ones that have additional bylaws. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking Library and Main Street, they're both accredited. They require, BDC require bylaws. The bylaws don't really put limits around their work plan. The bylaws are really additional details on procedure. So you wanna have six executive positions, you wanna have a parliamentarian, you wanna have a secretary, you wanna, or you wanna do, when your secretary rolls off the board, how do you get a new secretary? It's really kind of the nitty-gritty details that not all boards need to function, but some boards like operating at that level of detail. But we try to, you know, persuade boards against bylaws, just because if it conflicts with a change to the rules of procedure, it, because council every year reviews the rules of procedure, so if they put something in or change something, and it affects a bylaw, it just creates a little bit of chaos. So we like to, if a board needs a bylaw for a certain reason, then we will help them do that. But the board could have also come back and said, we really, really want bylaws, and we would have helped make that happen to bring to council. But it's really just procedures.
And initially, I had put in the implementation plan that we would create bylaws, correct? And then you explained to me that that was not required.
That it would be, it would be the board's decision whether or not they wanted to implement bylaws, that they, that was actually one of kind of the first conversations they have is, we do a presentation explaining the rules and procedures, and we say, okay, do you want to have a discussion around implementing bylaws? This is what you could put in them, this is what they could look like. For instance, the Cultural Arts Commission, they did not want to do bylaws. We had all those conversations, and they said, we don't want to do bylaws at this time, but if we get into this, and we get moving, and we think we actually need it, then we'll come back and revisit. But it would ultimately be up to the board.
And I actually, I also had written in the initial implementation plan that they should report to council biannually. And what was your response to that?
So our boards and commissions currently don't report to council on a set schedule unless there is something they are needing council approval on, or they're needing to do something like get a work plan that is blessed. So for instance, the Cultural Arts Commission came, they blessed the work plan. So as long as they're working within that work plan, the Cultural Arts Commission wouldn't come back unless there was something they were needing, additional funding, or additional support on, or they wanted to do something outside of that work plan. But that work plan is really, you tell council what you're going to accomplish and how you're going to do it.
So in your participation with the task force committee and the recommended members, do you feel that steps were taken to transition the committee into a board were done in any manner that did not fall within the procedural guidelines set forth by the city? And do you find any reason why the board should not move forward in the same manner as previous boards as outlined by the current Code of Ordinance?
So number one, I think that the creation of the board was done exactly as we went about the creation of the Cultural Arts Commission, which was our last board created. I can't speak to boards prior to that because I was not here for any of those. We followed that exact template. Whether council wants to require this board to operate under a different set of rules, or to operate in a different manner, or have different requirements, that is up to the will of council. I, unfortunately, that's not my role to make those decisions, but I can say that we followed the same exact process we followed for Cultural Arts Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry I put you on this spot.
That's all right.
I have a few questions for the mayor. And understanding how new boards are formed, because this is a brand-new board, if it was an existing board, you would be pulling applications for vacancies, to fill vacancies during the normal period of time. So I wanna make sure that the public understands, because this is a new board, and I, I contacted you on multiple occasions to make sure I was following the process, I contacted the city manager on multiple occasions, toward the end, I involved the city attorney to make sure we were following the correct process. And during that, I, if you recall, asked if you would be picking these members initially, or if you would, rather, recommendations be made prior to. And your response to me was to make recommendations prior to, and then you would review the applications and appointments, correct?
Yes, ma'am. For the Cultural Arts Board, and there's a couple of the boards, Main Street normally recommends somebody because it's somebody that's volunteered and worked on their different committees and things. But the only board that's been created since I was mayor was the Cultural Arts Board. The task force set forth a set of names, they filled out their applications. And just for clarity for everyone on all of the boards, the mayor appoints and council confirms.
Did you find that any of the communication you received regarding the transition was out of line, or disorderly, or there were personal agendas that were trying to be accomplished?
Not in my opinion.
And can you explain the role of a council liaison and a staff liaison that would be as a resource to this board?
Absolutely. One of the things, I was elected back in May of 2017, and when I was on the campaign trail, because it's a long time from the middle of January till the first Saturday in May, I heard two things. One, when I look at the board, the boards that the city has don't represent the community that we live in. And the second thing that I heard was, I applied for a board, but I never heard back from anybody. And so I'm not applying anymore. And so one of my goals was to make sure that I got, I did everything possible. Councilmember Lee, I believe that's how you ended up on the planning and zoning board, was because I met you and voluntold you to be on the planning and zoning board. They gather the applications and make the appointments, and we, you and I have had conversations about diversity does mean different things, specifically for planning and zoning. At one point, the board members on planning and zoning, if you took a map of the city of Bastrop and put a quarter down, everybody lived underneath the quarter. So when you're, when planning and zoning is making decisions that impact all the neighborhoods, my goal was to make sure that there was geographic diversity, so that there would be a representative that would be impacted, that lived in that neighborhood, that could speak to their neighbors. And so when they were making a decision, you'd have not folks living on, quite frankly, one side of the river, making a decision for people who lived on the other side of the river. So yes, that's, the goal has been to make sure that there was representation that reflected the community, and were people that were interested in advancing the community specific to the board. The council liaisons were because folks would tell me, I got assigned to a board, nobody ever talks to us, we have one meeting a month, and we don't really know what, what we're going, what's going on, and maybe the staff member takes something to council, and we, there needs to be a two-way street. There was also times that I observed at council meetings that someone would say, well, why did they vote that way, or what's going on? And, and there would be a group of folks saying, well, I wasn't at the meeting, and I didn't really hear that part. So in 2017, we assigned a council liaison, so there is a council... So there is a council member. I can remember conversations where it was like, we, well, we should say that, that we, we should make them attend the meeting if they're the council liaison. Just so everyone's clear, I can't make them do anything. And in fact, much like my small children, if I tried to make them do something, it's a pretty much a guarantee that they would do the exact opposite. So I try to be very respectful about the things that I ask them to do. So if you review our rules and processes, it's, rules and procedures. It says that we strongly encourage council members to attend the meetings for the, the boards that they're assigned to. So a council member attending the meeting is not to influence the board or sway them one way or the other. But it's more to answer things like, yes, there's still time to get on the next council meeting. Or to answer specific questions like, oh, council already talked about that, why don't you wait a couple of months? Or just to be able to share information. And to also be able to bring back to council things that happened at that meeting. The role of the staff liaison, Assistant City Manager Gleason went over and, and I completely agree with what she said. Municipal government gets complicated. And sometimes you need somebody to help you through the path of knowing, you know, how do I get an agenda item? Who do I need to talk to? Does it go to planning and zoning first? You know, that, that type of thing. Different topics come up at the board meetings and the staff liaisons help with that. They also help publish the agenda in accordance with open meetings act and just keep everybody legal.
Thank you. And my final questions involve the city attorney. So the, this committee would be bound to follow the rules of procedure outlined in the chapter one. In chapter one of the code of ordinances under general provisions, article 1 dot 04, boards, committee and commissions. Which details appointments, procedures, membership terms and rules of procedures set forth by city council in section 3.13. Under ordinance 2019-44. Is that correct? City Attorney?
Yes, those rules apply unless there's an exception that's made.
In fact, the ordinance 2019-44 contains a list of the various boards currently under the city. With the exception, I think of the youth council and the cultural arts board. And there is a statement that reads, whereas the city currently has several boards and commissions. With requirements for each board and commissions codified in various sections of the Bastrop city code. That's, is that correct?
I, I am not familiar with that particular ordinance, but I have no reason to doubt what you're saying.
And any future appointment should be held to the same standard is my argument. Can you explain what codified means?
Many cities across the state adopt ordinances and they look just like this. It's a piece of paper. And eventually pieces of paper get put into a binder or a file. And that's okay. And that's perfectly legal as a way to keep your ordinances in a filing cabinet, a binder on a shelf. However, what most cities after they become a certain population size do. Is they codify their ordinances by paying a company to organize them and put them into a book. Or put them online in a searchable way. We, the city of Bastrop, have hired a company called MuniCode. It's one of many. And they codify all of our ordinances by organizing them for us. That's what that means.
Thank you. Additionally, there is a statement that reads, whereas the city council has determined that unifying and simplifying. The requirements for its boards and commissions is in the best interest of the city and its citizens. What I also found consistent on multiple ordinances that I've read for the city. Is that each, each ordinance includes language with the terms providing for fact of finding, enactment, dissolution, repealer, severability, effective date. And proper notice and meeting with explanation. What I could not find on any of the ordinances for any standing board were defined expectations and directives. And that is the opposition that I have to the resolution. No other board had a resolution that, that micromanaged how that board was going to run. That was all, as you now have heard, previously discussed. In weeks, weeks leading up to the request to form this board. In addition into performing a search of our code and multiple ordinances for boards and commission. I found zero occurrences of the word bylaws. Zero. As a requirement that boards and commission must create. As we've been told, there is no rule that requires that we, that any board has bylaws. That's something that is up to them unless I have missed some state law that I am not aware of. So last question, from a legal perspective, do you feel that this transition into, from the committee to a board? Was done in any manner that did not fall within the procedural guidelines set forth by the city?
I don't know of any defects in the priest, in the process, other than perhaps the timing of board appointments, which is something you've already addressed.
Thank you. So in conclusion, I believe in having honest conversations. Last week, when council member Plunkett said he was afraid of this getting out of control. I was a little confused by what that statement meant. Why, why is there a concern that this board would get out of control? What would be getting out of control look like? Are you afraid that the youth advisory council, council would get out of control? Why are you not concerned about the cultural arts commission getting out of control? Why are you not concerned about the Bastrop arts and public places getting out of control? What is it about this board that makes people think the people serving on the board will for some reason get out of control? When they have to operate under the same rules or procedures as any other board? Well, I left, when I left the meeting, I left feeling defeated. Even though the vote passed, I was disappointed. It was as if to say, a group of minorities aren't capable, capable of coming together in a professional and productive manner. Unless stipulations are placed on them to control their behaviors and actions. We all know that any action that this board takes, like all other boards, will be done so at the approval of council. And the staff liaison is in place to ensure that they operate in a manner that's consistent with the code of ordinance already established. So I'm not clear on why this resolution was created. The scope and purpose of the board was explained in detail at the July 26 meeting. There was an implementation plan included in the packets for every council member, which also talked about next steps. Also talked about the goals of this board and what this board wanted to accomplish. I presented a detailed explanation in a PowerPoint presentation, which covered purpose, the mission, the goals, the milestones. We achieved, achieved as a task force committee. Prior to that, to that meeting, the information was presented and reviewed by the mayor. I sent it to the city manager, Paul Hoffman. I sent it to the assistant city manager, Rebecca Gleason. I sent it to our city attorney for review. And changes were recommended to me and made at their suggestion to ensure that we were in compliance with our current processes. And then reviewed with the individuals, as Rebecca has explained, what those processes are. In the presence of the city manager. The city manager then updated efforts prior to that in his weekly memo. He meant, so the council members that were part of this process from the beginning has gotten updates in the weekly memo. He talked about the fact that I would be coming to council to ask for this task force to be converted to a board. On the July 12th council meeting. Then we presented on the 26th. I received no inquiry in any of this time. When it was a task force committee, I received no inquiry from anyone on council asking questions about the purpose. And, and what we were trying to accomplish with this board. After he announced on the 12th that I would be coming to council to transition this into a board. I received no inquiry. I received no inquiry when we got our packets on the Thursday before the 26th meeting to find out more information about this board. So for it to be automatically said, no, we don't need it, was very disappointing to me. And then to understand what was being done behind the scenes to put these parameters was even more disappointing. Because this was, has never been done for another board, as far as anyone can recall. Councilmember Crouch called me the next day, and I appreciate that. The day after the vote, councilmember Crouch reached out to me, told me he didn't understand the process. He told me the same concerns that he explained to you guys now. We discussed it. I, I thanked him for reaching out to me directly because that's how I feel things should be done. If you have questions, you ask questions. If there were concerns, those concerns could have been addressed at the July 26th meeting. But they were not. We just got a vote of no. He did again acknowledge that he did not know the process. And at the end of that conversation, he expressed the support of the, of the board. And thought that it was needed in this community. Even asked, or we even talked about possibly him serving as a liaison so that, to the board. So that he could learn more about the efforts of what needs to be done to promote diversity and inclusion. With the blessing of the mayor, of course. I have not heard from any of the other opposing council members. But I know that there were conversations to set parameters, directives and expectations on this board. The sole purpose of this board will be to facilitate the development of a strategic plan. To assess the current state of diversity and inclusion in the city of Bastrop and city services, community engagement. Employment opportunities and community partnerships in an effort to promote inclusion of all residents. Each of the members who have been recommended were strategically chosen because of the work they have done in the community. And the reach they have in building bridges that will connect minorities and underserved communities to resources and opportunities we, we all should have access to. There has been no production of a justifiable cause as to why the recommended members should not be appointed to the initial board. The level of divisiveness that has occurred as a result in the last two weeks, we don't need in our community. And that goes completely against what this board is about. The purpose and the mission of the board will be to lay a foundation for unity and healing in a way that builds bridges of trust between minority residents and local government entities. Why would anyone want to hinder that process? So yes, what has transpired has been disappointing. But as a council member, we have a duty to accept the points of views of others for the good of this city. So again, I want to thank everyone who came to speak and everyone who submitted their comments online. When your purpose is pure in your effort, you don't allow obstacles to defeat your mission. So in an effort to work together to ensure this council and its processes are not called into question. I wanted to make sure that you understand the effort and time that was put into making sure that this process was done correctly. I would like the resolution to not include additional directives because that has not been the standard practice. And I don't think that we should make it a standard practice now. And if we do it now, are we going to do it for future boards? I'm not opposed to their resolution because most, 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 most of what they put in their resolution was in my implementation plan. Word for word. So I don't again see the point of putting it in the actual resolution. Other than you wanting to exert power and micromanagement of this board. So if we all feel the same way that this board is needed in our community. I would ask that, I would like to make a motion to remove that language and pass the original resolution. Rather than go into this board, they were so motivated and ready to do the work. Feeling like they're being micromanaged because it's a minority group. I thank you for your time. I thank you guys for answering my questions. And I hope that we all have a better understanding of the goals and the missions of this board.
Councilmember Lee, I want to have clarity around your motion. Is your motion to approve resolution R 20-2271 and remove section one? Expectations and directives? I just, I just, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I just want to have clarity before we ask for a second.
I want to just make sure section one was the only thing that needs to be removed.
Okay.
Give me just a second. Give me just a second. Sixty-two. All right, so I got it up here. Yes, I would like to remove section one.
I have a motion on the floor to approve resolution 2022-71 with the removal of section one. Do I have a second?
Just for clarity, can I ask her to reword her motion before the second?
Anything, Mayor Protem Rogers, you have the floor.
I was just, councilmember Lee, if you remember at our last council meeting. I, I was very proud of what you, what you proposed. And maybe because I've been on the council a little longer than most of the other ones sitting here. During my monthly meetings with Paul, I was updated on, on that, on that whole committee that was going on. So maybe I didn't reach out with you because I already had updates continuously from him. And I would, I would, I was hoping to motion to deny the entire thing and keep the way we voted last council meeting. So I'm asking you to reword your motion for a full denial. Stick with what we originally passed.
I accept the amendment to my motion to deny this resolution. And I'm not sure what the resolution number was for the July 26th.
It doesn't matter because it's approved. So I have a motion on the floor to deny resolution 2022-71. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second from councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or questions from council before we take a vote? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, certainly. I, I said I wasn't going to vote without talking about it. Promised that to you a little bit ago. So I guess we get to talk about it. So many different directions, so many different thoughts. This resolution was prepared based upon a model that's in use successfully at, at several cities in Texas. And it, it spoke to me because there are many different models that exist in, in, in different DEI boards throughout the country. In, in some larger cities, the kind of extraordinary version of a DEI implementation is that they're in the position of final arbiters. Of what is allowed in the city. And they score and grade all budgetary items. They look at all line items that are on council agendas and provide that input and feedback to council. That says that you shall vote this way. And, and so this runs into a philosophy of how to govern. And on the philosophy on how to govern, I think, or the, the citizens elect representatives. And I feel that is philosophically unacceptable for an unelected commission to have that kind of implied power. Over a governing body, over city council or any other. Now, having said that, that is an implementation of a DEI board in another place. And their rules, their resolutions, their ordinances, they allow for that. In fact, it explicitly calls it out. The concern that I had when looking at the resolution that we had last time. Is that it didn't specify how the organization was going to interact with the city, with the city manager, with the city council. And so because of that, that other model that I described. And so because of that, that other model that I described, that I would have said was unacceptable and I would have voted against, was possible. And this is the core of my reason for wanting to look for a way to a way to form the group in a manner that where they're able to realize all of the things that they wrote down in the plan that was shared with us at the last meeting and be successful with that. There was no discussion of a budget. The attachment to the resolution wasn't written by Allen, and so it had some technical defects in how it was written. And, you know, I told you where I grew up, and I felt like that not only were Mexican-Americans excluded from substantial representation amongst the recommended group, there was actually a requirement that individuals be US, sorry, that they be voters, which if they're voters, that means they're required to be US citizens. If they're US citizens, that means that if a recent immigrant comes into our community, they can own land, they can pay taxes, but they can't participate in the DEI board. And those things were specified in the resolution that we had last week. And so I, not last week, two weeks ago, and so I this has nothing to do with this has everything to do with responsible governance. And when Councilperson Plunkett at the last meeting said that he's not concerned about the motives of the particular people that are on this group, not concerned with the motives of Councilperson Lee, but instead concerned about the motives of people we don't know five years from now, and that we want to make sure that there are, that the rules in place do not then turn into something that's unacceptable. Because I've had the opportunity to speak to two of the individuals that were recommended for the board, I now have a better understanding of their hearts, and I know, I would have said, well, I have no reason to believe or suspect that they intend to turn it into this thing that I find unacceptable. But now I can say, I genuinely believe that that's not the intention, okay? But that doesn't change the need for responsible governance on when you create policy. And so when Councilperson Plunkett kind of brought up this basic issue at the last meeting, he was assured that bylaws would be written. Now, we've covered that topic in this meeting quite thoroughly, and I believe, based upon walking out of that meeting, that bylaws were going to be written. And so I dug into it because I wanted to know, well, what do bylaws look like? So I started with the Cultural Arts Commission, and I didn't find bylaws. And then I went to our Code of Ordinances, and again, you know, responsible governing, I'm trying to find out what are these rules and what do they look like? And I didn't find any. So I sent an email to Allen and asked, where does this requirement for bylaws come from? Because if it wasn't for the promise of bylaws, this motion would have entirely failed at the meeting. And the idea that we would be able to look at bylaws and ensure that we were governing responsibly was what, was why it passed. And then to learn that that was not going to take place, you could say it felt like a bait and switch, maybe dishonest, maybe something. Now, I have actually no reason to think it was dishonest. It was just a mistake. But it doesn't prevent you from feeling a certain way when you learn that you made a decision based upon something that's untrue. And so that spawned kind of the, well, okay, I don't think that we should cancel this, take it away, remove it, eliminate it. I think that we should find a way to set rules so that it can do everything that it wants to and nothing that it doesn't want to. And so I started researching and found a collection of cities that all had the same set of rules as they formed their DEI commissions, and I recommended Allen to look at one of And here we are, this is the resolution that we have here. It's not intended to limit any of the things that the group wants to do today, and I also think that if there's a concern about having an annual report requirement, I would have no problem with also asking all of the other boards and commissions to file annual reports. To be honest, I kind of thought they were required because we're starting to get some of them from some of our, like Visit Bastrop or things like that. We're having items come onto our agenda saying that we're going to receive annual reports from different groups. So having been here, the limited time that I've been, I assumed that we were going to start seeing annual reports. So I wouldn't object at all to making those rules universal. And honestly, I think this is the right thing to do for responsible governance, and then I want to cheer on the committee to do everything that they wanted to do. And so, as I understand, the motion is to deny this, and so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland. I want to clarify a couple of things. One, because I'm the person that talked about the bylaws, it's incorrect to say we assumed that they were going to happen. They weren't a part of the motion. The motion that was voted on was to approve the resolution. So we talk about all kinds of things, but when council members vote, you need to have clarity around what you're voting on, and if you wanted to make the bylaws be a part of the motion, then it needs to be a part of the motion. So the idea that I was trying to bait and switch or that there was an adverse motive, I very much take exception to. The two boards that I am involved in are BEDC and Library, and they both have bylaws. So there was a discussion about them, and if they were required, then it should have been included in the motion. And I also can't help but notice that they are not required in your resolution of 2022-71. So I kind of have some confusion about that if the only thing was the bylaws. Now, maybe you wanted the resolution to take the place of the bylaws, but so that's fine. The other thing I want to clarify on the annual reports is the reason that we're having annual reports from Visit Bastrop is because this council funds their entire organization. It's over a million dollars of hot funds. The reason that the Opera House and the museum and Los Pines Art Center come back and report is because they are given a substantial sum of money, and they are given that money with expectation, so they come back to council and report. Advisory boards are advisory boards. They don't have a large budget. The only 4B, the BEDC board, has a budget. That's state statute because the citizens in this community voted to give them a portion of the sales tax, so that's where their budget comes from. And the Main Street Board has a budget that we know very well is a line item and included in our budget every year. But advisory boards with no budgets are not included in the same category as someone who's being funded out of a specific fund like the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. What we did implement in 20, help me, Ms. Franklin, 2017 or 2018, we started having the boards and commissions appreciation dinners, and we talked about, we make sure that the boards get introduced, they have an opportunity to spend some time together, and they report on accomplishments of the past year and talk about what their goals are for the next year. If council has a will and is wanting to have additional reporting required by the advisory boards, that's certainly something that you can ask to be on the agenda, and we can make it a requirement for everyone. But the way we've been doing it for the last five years is advisory boards report in November what goals they accomplished and what they're working on the following year. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of those things. Councilmember Crouch, you had your light on. Would you like to?
I don't want to interrupt you if you're
I'm done.
Okay. I don't think that, none of us have been, at least this group of council people haven't been on the council very long, with the exception of Drusilla.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Mayor Protem Rogers. And so we're not experienced in forming a board. Cheryl is now, and she's got a lot of guidance from a lot of people, obviously, because we've just spent a couple of hours spelling it out, what she did to get the board formed. I don't think that it would be right for the council to start any new board without some type of set of rules for them to follow. I don't think it would cause you to not achieve any of your goals or milestones if you formed your committee, formed your board, followed a set of rules. Maybe this set of rules could be used for every board that we form from now on. Maybe it could be a standard set of rules that we could have for that. I really don't think you should form any board without some rules. I couldn't do that in my personal life, just start something up and not have a rule to follow to keep you from doing things that you're not supposed to do. I couldn't do that. So I don't see why we can't, maybe this will be our format for new boards starting up.
Just for clarity, Councilmember Crouch, the Rules of Procedure for City Council Boards and Commissions, that is the rules that they follow, and those are the rules and the procedures that all of the boards follow in the city, and it's reviewed annually and, in fact, on our agenda tonight. So those are the rules that are in place.
So are we going to, we need to vote for the?
We have a motion to oppose, deny Resolution 2022-71. We have a second from Council, from Mayor Protem Rogers. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember Lee?
I mean, to your point, what are the rules do you need? They are governed by the city ordinance and the rules of procedure. Those are the rules. What you have put in this resolution is the implementation plan, which if you have the documentation and read the packet that you were given with that implementation plan, that's in the implementation plan that you approved, so they would already have to follow that because we approved it. It was approved. So there's still a confusion on why the need to put detailed information about what they're supposed to do, but this isn't even following the rules of procedure. You're basically putting the implementation plan in the resolution. The rules are already there. What is it that you think that they're going to do outside of what's in our rules and procedure? They're already governed. You said there should be some governance. There's already governance. It's in our rules or procedures. I feel like this is being placed in the resolution because, just because you think it should be in the resolution, but there's no justification for it. And there's no process for it now. Now, is that something maybe we can consider in the future? Maybe. Ask for that to be on an agenda item. But why is it so important that these rules be handed down? In your view, because I don't see these as rules. I see these as the implementation plan because it's the exact same thing that's in the implementation plan that was approved. So they would already have to follow what you put in this resolution. Why does it need to be part of the resolution? They're not rules.
I don't know. I don't know. Why can't, I was going to make a motion or amend the motion that was made to not turn it down totally, but to approve it as written, with the exception of Section 1A, and have quarterly reporting instead of annual reporting.
Councilmember Lee, are you willing to accept that friendly amendment?
No, I'm not.
All right. Then the motion on the floor stands as opposing Resolution 2022-71. Councilmember Kirkland, do you have further comment?
Yes, ma'am. So you asked me about, there's a few things. So you asked me about bylaws and the
No, I didn't ask about the bylaws. I asked about the rules of procedure that already governs the board.
I have the floor, I believe, Mayor. Mayor, kindly, I was referring to you. You had asked me about bylaws and why they weren't mentioned, let's say, the creation of bylaws in this document. And you said perhaps that I intended for the documents to represent bylaws, and yes, that was kind of my thought, is that it sets those. And I know that we're talking about the rules of procedure, and everyone here, if you choose to stick around, will hear us read them out loud because we are going to review them tonight. They cover the rules of how you make a motion, how you second that motion, what the agenda looks like, what the rules are for putting things on agendas. And it's absolutely true that these rules are set for every board and commission to follow because it determines how they set their meetings. Literally, we are following these rules right now just by virtue of talking to you. And there's no question those apply to every board and commission, and they apply to the inter-meeting discussion and how we hold that. And we have a good set of rules in Bastrop, and they're kind of simplified. You might think of it like Robert's Rules of Order, if you've ever heard such a thing. They decide how a meeting is run. And we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. Ours are derived from something called Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and it's based out of some people in California that kind of succinctly drill down on what those rules should look like. And again, it's how you make motions, how you second things. And it doesn't at all address, say, the scope of responsibility for a board, which the city council is responsible for setting. And there is one point here that I have to fully, completely, 100% own, and that is that I should have said this last week, or, sorry, last meeting, two weeks ago. I should have stated that I have concerns and that my concerns aren't that we shouldn't have people get together and talk about diversity and how to achieve diversity, but that there are different ways that different organizations choose to sit around and implement those things, and there are models for that that don't fit our community. And so it's my fault. I didn't bring this up at the last meeting. But ultimately, this style of resolution that lays out very simply that the group will provide their recommendations to city council and the city manager, that they'll work through the city manager for any issues within the city, they'll work with the city manager for any police and fire issues or concerns within minority communities. And it's kind of a question there about, should the DEI group work directly with the fire chief and police chief? And my feedback on that is that, as a city council member, I am not allowed to work directly with the fire chief or police chief because they report to our city manager, and our charter says that for any employee that reports to city manager, I'm not allowed And our charter says that for any employee that reports to city manager, I'm not allowed to work with them directly. Instead, I go to the city manager. And it is a way of preventing corruption. It's a way that our, our system of government is set up. And so, um, in, it, it didn't seem appropriate, potentially even, that it would pass muster in a court for me, as a city council member, to pass a resolution that gives someone the ability to go interact with someone that I can't interact with myself. And so I, I chose in this case for it to say that, that the group would interact with the city manager for issues relating to the fire chief and police chief domains or areas. I actually brought something to the, to Paul, the city manager, a couple of weeks ago on behalf of the fire, sorry, police chief. And he looked into that issue for me and, and, and they all got back to me. So I mean, I know that that model works and it's the one that we're required to follow. So, yeah. I think that's it for now.
All right, counsel, is there any further deliberation before we take a vote? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I'd like to address a couple of mentions that I got. First of all, I don't know how many of you, the public is aware of it, but I know everybody on council is. We're governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act. And the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow us to check with each other for, you know, to deliberate issues that could become, that could come before the board, council in this case. And so, no, I, I don't go and, and check with somebody because I'm assuming that you've already probably talked to somebody else on council about it. And if anybody has asked me about it, then, you know, we've reached a quorum and that becomes illegal to make that inquiry. So I'm very careful about Texas Open Meetings Act. I'm on another board where that's very much an issue, and it's part of my DNA. It's, I have, I, it's, it's where I live. I've, I've been on that board for, what, six or seven years now? And there was another one as well. So, um, you know, that's why I couldn't come to you, um, you know, on that issue. And that's why I think, you know, a workshop session, you know, would have probably been a better place to talk about all of this. And, and maybe that's what we should do at some point. Because all we're trying to do with this resolution is, is better define what it is the organization is to do. It's to set it up for success. And because we felt like there were, you know, you know, everybody knows I have a couple of restaurants, you know, you know, one of the things that we have to do is define what our menu is and, and what, what it is, you know, what type of food, what are, and we can't just, oh, hey, you know, guess what? Everybody likes corn dogs. Let's, you know, and, you know, let's add that to the menu. Let's, you know, it has to be done within the scope of, of the, of what the organization was set up to do. And that's all we did in this resolution is just to try to create that definition of purpose and a means in which to get there. You know, I, I, I'd ask anyone to read this and, and tell me where we're asking this organization to do anything that another one doesn't. I would expect, as far as a annual report, I would expect you would want to report to council on the things that need to be changed so that council can act on those things. If, if you don't, I mean, I, I just, I don't understand. That was, that was a method to communicate. It was defining the method, you know, by which these issues can be addressed and dealt with. Because I would assume that there would be things that you would want council to address. And it would be much better to do that in an organized way than, than haphazard. If there's haphazard, um, issues that come up that need to be dealt with urgently, then that's why we left the method in there for the city council, I mean, sorry, city manager and, and, and the liaisons. I mean, we, we created this in order to make it work better. And, and I resent the idea that by trying to do this, we're, we're somehow trying to, to create additional burdens on the group. That was not the intent. It was, how do we make it successful?
All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to deny the resolution made by Councilmember Lee and seconded by Mayor Protem Rogers. So if you vote yes, you are voting to deny the resolution. Does everyone have clarity about what's before them? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
No.
Councilmember Crouch?
No.
Councilmember Kirkland?
No.
So the motion to deny the resolution fails with a vote of two to three. Is there another motion to consider?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-2022-71 with the exception of Section 1A. And instead of having yearly reporting, you have quarterly reporting.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch. And so the, the only thing that you're adding is to make it quarterly reporting, but everything else you're wanting to stay in 1A?
Yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch to add quarterly reporting?
Can I explain why?
Certainly.
Just, just because the annual reporting would just obviously be annually. So if you have quarterly reporting, at least the council could see what the committee is doing and, and if there are suggestions or items, ideas to share, that you can do that on a quarterly basis rather than not have this at all.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch to approve the resolution with the, with the Resolution 2022-71 with the addition of quarterly reports to Section 1A. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Can we, let me see if I have my motion.
Okay.
So the motion fails.
Second.
I got a second from Councilmember Plunkett. City Manager Jobe?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make some clarity here. It's not my, it's not my job to establish policy, but it is my job sometimes to make recommendations. What I've heard tonight, everybody has some great concerns and, and they do make some sense. And we've had a, some history in the past, just recently with our Economic Development Board, we provided some, some good information and some directives and some goals that we'd like to see established. Again, I think it would be okay to bring something back later if that's something the council would like to entertain for all of the boards, right? Once we've had term, time to work through this, I think tonight you may be piecemealing a little bit. And again, I'm just gonna give you my advice. You're certainly welcome to vote on whatever you want. But I do think it would be easier, for example, quarterly meetings for a, a board that meets monthly is a huge burden on the staff liaison, for example. So I would really like to give some thought from a staff perspective on how we establish something in governance for all the boards. And that makes a lot of sense to me. Again, that's just my recommendation and I'll stop talking.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager Jobe. I think what you're saying is that one, one possibility would be to pull this and come back with something that's for all boards, not just one board. But what we have on the floor is a motion to approve 2022-71 with the addition of quarterly reporting to the Section 1A. And I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Kirkland?
So I, I have the same concern that City Manager Jobe, Jobe, mentioned, Jobe. And that is that the frequency of, of reporting, if you're, if you're meeting once a month, would be prohibitive.
Councilmember Kirkland, are you done? I have Councilmember Lee's lights on as well.
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm not. But I'm thinking, and so I'll give up the floor and then...
Councilmember Lee?
So I appreciate your comments, City Manager, because that is my whole point. We are, we have now gone to recommending this board report quarterly when no other board is doing that. No other board received a resolution of this manner. I, if we're going to, if we're going to do it for this board, then we should come back and do it for all boards simultaneously. I would be willing to make a friendly amendment that we do pull this item and we do come back with a resolution that then would include all boards. Because it's not fair to say we need governance over this board when that same governance that you're proposing is not on the other boards. We are not playing with an equal field here. We're not on an equal footing here. So I would, I would like to make a friendly emotion, amendment to the motion that we do pull this and come back with an item. I, I guess I need to ask the city attorney, will we come back? And that would be a separate agenda item, so to establish rules of procedure or governance over all boards? And then this be reverted back to the original resolution that was approved? How would that work?
Councilmember Lee, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not a parliamentarian. So I, I think that for your friendly amendment to go on, the parties who made the motion and the second would have to agree to your friendly amendment. So that's procedurally one thing that we need to do. Regardless of whether this passes or in what shape it passes tonight, any two council members have the ability to put an item on a future city council agenda or direct city staff to work on something and bring it back for future consideration, including some sort of resolution or ordinance that would apply to all boards and commissions.
Thank you. And that, that's what I feel like needs to happen. If we're saying that there should be governance over boards to give them direction, then let's make that governance over all boards, not just this board in our motion.
So Councilmember Crouch, are you, will you agree to that friendly amendment? Or do, should we go forward with the motion as it is? I need you to turn on the mic. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking. Yeah, I, I can change my motion to table it for further discussion. Is that the, your question? Does that answer your question?
So we would have a motion to table Item 12B and come back with a resolution that's applied to all city boards. Is that your amendment and is that what you're accepting?
Yes.
And Councilmember Plunkett, do you accept that friendly amendment? Do you still second that?
I'm certainly fine with tableing it. Now, part of what we're trying to do is, is set this board up. So part, it's not...
This board is set up because the resolution passed?
Yes. It, it's to modify how it was set up. Okay. And I don't know how the other boards were set up. I wasn't a part of that. So I was a part of the Bastrop being set up, and this was very much the conversation we had when we were setting that board up. It was what, how do you define its purview and, and where, how does it, how does it get its money? How does it report? How does it do? It's how it does what it does. And so to not have that, you know, those kind of things in the original resolution is concerning to me because I don't know how we're gonna judge success of that organization without those things.
I'm really trying hard to keep up here. So are you agreeing to the friendly amendment or not? Okay. So I think what we have before us is to table Resolution 2022-71 and direct city staff to work with the city attorney to come back with a directions, like I would say, expectations and directives to all city boards. Councilmember Crouch, is that, is, do you have clarity on that? Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Yes, I was just hoping we could move forward with a version of this diversity and inclusiveness board and get something passed tonight. I really would not, would rather not table it.
So are you not agreeing to the friendly amendment?
I'm just, I'm asking, I'm gonna ask Cheryl directly. If we can finish this up tonight and...
The way to finish this...
...with that amendment, and if you're not...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
I was, I was interrupting you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's, I'm just asking you directly if we can, I'd like to get this board set up and move on with the way it's written except for quarterly reporting.
Okay, I just want to remind counsel that Resolution 2022-67 was approved at the last council meeting with a vote of 3-2. The board's been created with the implementation plan that was included in the exhibit. So just because we're, I don't want there to be confusion about whether or not the board's been created. Council created this board on July 26th. What we're talking about is additional, specifically, expectations and directives to the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board.
Then if I change my motion, I would change my motion to accept the resolution as written.
And take out the quarterly reporting?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-71 as written. Do I still have the second of Councilmember Plunkett for as written or not? If not, do I have a second to Councilmember Crouch's motion? So the motion dies for lack of a second.
I apologize. Second.
Okay, gotta be timely, gentlemen. It's nine o'clock. All right. I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-71 as written by Councilmember Crouch, seconded by Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion before the secretary calls the roll? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
No. And I'm disappointed that we are going to have expectations of one board that we don't have on the other board. And I'm also disappointed on the idea to, to make expectations on the rest of the board just to make your expectations on this board clarifit. That's not right either. So just because I want to have rules for this, this group, let's make the same rules for everybody else. So I vote no twice.
But the tally will be three votes for and two votes against, which means that 2022-71 is approved as written. It is 8:57 and we are going to take a short recess. We will come back and take up Item 12A. We will come back and take up item 12A. In the session, we are going to be taking up item 12A. Consider action to approve Resolution number R20-22... Sorry. 2022-69 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a construction contract with Archer Western Construction LLC to provide construction manager at risk, otherwise known as CMAR, services for a not-to-exceed amount of $8,931,902, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Very happy to be here tonight and having reached this milestone with this project. And in front of you, for your consideration and authorization, is a contract for construction phase services with Archer Western for what we are calling GMP number one, which stands for Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One for the constructions of the clear well and the drilling of the three wells that are part of the water treatment plant. So we have a good team. This is the largest CIP project that the city is managing, and we have a good team assisting the city throughout the whole process that I would like to acknowledge their presence tonight. We're at the PowerPoint.
Colin, I think she's missing slides. The next slide went to 12B. Do you have a 12A presentation? We kind of are done with 12B. You got nothing?
Sorry about that. I don't know what happened.
All righty, yay, okay.
So as I was mentioning, this is the largest CIP project that the city is managing. And we have a knowledgeable team assisting the city throughout the whole process that I would like to acknowledge the presence of them tonight. We have from Freezinico's Kendall King and Kira Isles. And from Archer Western, we have Thor Benson. Yeah, thank you. So I would like to start by providing you with a little bit of background, and then I'll hand it over.
Only if you promise not to read the slides.
Some of it. A background, and then I'll hand it over to Kendall King to continue the presentation, and I'll open up two questions at the end. So between 2018 and 2020, we entered... The city entered with a master services agreement with Freezinico's to do a preliminary design report and also to do engineering services for the design and construction administration phases. During the design phase, Freezinico's recommended the city the use of construction manager at risk delivery method. City approved the use of construction delivery method in 2020. And then we moved... Can you go to the next slide? Okay. In 2021, the city advertised a request for qualifications for the CMAR and for the design phase services. At that time, we received seven statements of qualifications. After the evaluation, we selected Archer Western as the most qualified firm. The city approved a professional services contract with Archer Western in 2021. Next slide. Now hand it over to Kendall King.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. King.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. It's a privilege to be here to talk to you about this. As Fabiola said, a major milestone in the progress of the city's journey towards a new water supply project. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of the whole program and then get into more details about the construction contract that you have before you tonight. I will try to be brief. I know that you've been briefed and provided some background information, but if you want me to expand on something, please tell me. I could talk about this all night. But, okay. So the city is moving towards developing a brand-new water supply for the purpose of making it more a reliable supply. Right now, you're relying on alluvial wells that you're trying to replace with new wells and much more reliable, resilient, and higher-quality water supply. So that's what we're talking about, is that whole program. Next slide, please. The whole program consists of drilling three new wells in a new wellfield north of town in an area that used to be referred to as XS Ranch. I'm not sure what it's called now. The city already has one well there, well J, that was drilled but was never put into service. This project will drill three more, and then that one... Those four together will provide this water supply. We have a water treatment plant. The water quality at well J is pretty good. You could actually drink it. It would be safe. But it's not the quality that the city would like to provide to its citizens. It's a little bit high in iron and manganese. And so the city is going to provide a water treatment facility to improve that, to provide a very high-quality water to its citizens. So the groundwater treatment facilities is a new water treatment plant with gravity filtration and chemical feed facilities to facilitate that removal of the iron and manganese. Next slide, please. Part of that is a low-lift pump station. We move the water from the filters up to an above-ground clear well, a ground storage tank, which is actually what you will be including in this construction contract this evening, this clear well, this above-grade concrete tank. And then there's a backwash pump station that pumps that water back through the filters to clean them. Next slide, please. And then finished water is transmitted to town through a new 24-inch pipeline that runs from the treatment plant site, kind of along the railroad alignment, comes down to Reed's Bend Road, turns, heads over to Carter, and then down to the existing Willow Treatment Plant site, where it's going to be delivered to the ground storage tank there and then repumped into the distribution system. Okay, next slide. There's also a lift station and a force main to take the backwash water from the treatment process and send it to the city sewer system. So there's a lift station and a force main. That force main parallels the new transmission line until it gets down to Carter and, I think, Laurel, and then dumps into a manhole there. Okay, there's the project location map, which is kind of hard to tell what's going on from that. But let's move on to the next slide and start talking about... Okay, the project team. Your project manager is Ms. DeCavaro. Fabiola DeCavaro. The construction manager for the city is Renee Aguilar. And your project owner, the guy that we're answering to on this, is Curtis Hancock, one we have to satisfy with our finished project. Yep. And he's a hard boss. Kira Isles...
Good, we pay him to...
Kira Isles, who was introduced earlier, is the project manager who's doing all the hard work. I'm the project principal and senior advisor. And then we will have a full-time construction inspector on site, a guy named Kenneth Barnes, who has, up to this point, not been really involved in the project, but will be soon. Next slide. And then Archer Western's team. Mark Tepera is the project principal, and Thor, who was introduced earlier, is the project manager. Next slide. Okay, so here's where we get into the part that you need to consider tonight, and this is the construction contract. As was already described, you have a design phase professional services agreement with Archer Western. What Archer Western has done during the design phase is provide cost modeling, schedule modeling, value engineering. They reviewed our designs. They've offered us constructibility review comments, and they've been part of our design team and kept us kind of informed on where we were at with this unbelievably crazy construction market, based on our design, where we were at budget-wise. And that's been a very hard thing to track down. We've done a lot of value engineering to try to take money out of the project, and they've been a valuable part of that team doing that. So moving forward, the construction contract that you're reviewing tonight is for the actual construction. It's a separate contract from the professional services agreement, and this is a construction contract to build the facilities now. The CMAR process that we are using is going to have multiple guaranteed maximum prices. So we will come back to you in the future with more GMPs, a GMP 2 and a GMP 3. GMP 1 is for the drilling of the wells and for the construction of the clear well. And that's because those pieces of the project need to be done first. And so that design was done first. We took bids. We opened those bids, and we're ready to authorize that construction contract. Next slide, please. We advertised those pieces of the project on July 6th, opened bids on July 27th, evaluated those bids. That's part of the CMAR's job, is to evaluate those bids and make a recommendation to the city. Two contracts... Or two subcontracts are included in this, one with Weisinger for drilling the wells and one with a company called Preload for building the pre-stressed concrete clear well tank. Next slide, please. There's the summary of the bids that we got on the wells. I will say that those were within about 1% of what had been estimated in the CMAR's cost model and just slightly above. And Weisinger was the low bidder and also ranked highest in their qualifications. So they were the company that was recommended by the CMAR. Next slide, please. Preload, their bid was about 1% low, or lower than the cost model. So we're kind of right on track with the budget. And they also had a high qualification score. So that was also recommended. Next slide. Any questions?
Mr. King, just from having been in the business, pretty impressive to have hearing drawings and have the bids be that tight. So hats off to you guys. That's very, very impressive. So yay, you guys are... That's a good sign.
Before I step away, I will say that we've got four more packages that we are ready to take bids on. Those will advertise very soon. Bid opening, I think, is September 15th. So we will be back to you with GMP number two to add on to GMP number one as we work towards completing all the design and the construction.
Great. Thank you, Mr. King. All right, how are we going to pay for it, Fabiola?
So the funding will come from the Certificates of Obligations Bond Series 2021 with your approval tonight and to submit notice to proceed for this month. And this project is anticipated completion January 2024 for the GMP number one. Next slide. There is no... We don't anticipate any service interruptions to water, wastewater, or traffic. And we will update... Provide updates on these projects through the Building Bastrop page. Next slide. And with that, we ask you that you authorize the approval of this contract, and we can take any questions at this time.
Great job. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Kirkland?
I have some ignorance questions. I wouldn't even object to motioning to approve, but I actually have questions about what some of this means. So there is a CM at risk. And I had to Google that term. Can you just explain that to me briefly?
Is the construction manager at risk delivery method that we are using. And it can be called CMAR, C-M-A-R, or also the way that we are establishing here on this contract, it's CM at risk. So what they do is that they work for this project as a construction manager. We are hiring them to be the construction manager on this project. And they contracted out the contractors that will be working on this project. But they also can self-perform any of this work.
It's a construction methodology and payment process that a previous council approved and said, this is how we're going to do it. We approved a CMAR process.
Great, thank you.
And I will say, although CMAR's been around for quite a while, it is the first project that Bastrop's ever done on a CMAR. But it's a defined process.
Okay, thank you. And the eight points... There's a discussion of GMP 1. There's additional things. What will be the completed... So we'll have three wells?
Three wells.
Three wells.
As part of this project, three wells?
As part of this project, not... Three new wells? Okay, oh, right. And the well J you mentioned?
Yeah.
Mr. King, I need you to get to the mic so people at home can hear your answer.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, yes, well J was drilled. It's completed. There's a pump in it, but there's no power, and there's no surface facilities, piping, electrical controls. So part of the project is to finish well J and put it in service, and then three new wells to go with it.
Okay, great. So we have four wells, and then we have some piping. Where does that piping go?
This is for the clear well. The ground storage tank.
The piping description, ultimately, when all the guaranteed max price packages are done, we will have a water treatment plant that connects to our existing system. So he was just given an overview of the entirety of the project. But for $8, $9 million, you're getting completed four wells and a clear well.
Yes.
And a clear well?
Yes.
I don't know what a clear well is.
It's a big tank.
Okay.
But you can't have a water treatment plant without. So it's just the building blocks of the water treatment plant.
So we're getting four completed wells and enough piping to push water into a clear tank? And a clear tank?
No.
No.
No, so they're not connected even to the clear tank?
There's going to be another package that we'll be bringing to you and with another GMP.
Right. And...
We will be happy to have a water treatment plant workshop. I'm sure Mr. Hancock will be happy to explain to you the major components of a water treatment plant.
Excellent. And I'm interested in that, by the way. But I just wanted to understand what this was for. I know that there's additional things coming and that the summation of all of those pieces together gives Bastrop a new water source, which is great. I just wanted to know what this specific one included.
Four wells and a big tank.
Yes.
Okay. Electricity?
Sorry.
No, that's another package.
Okay.
Four wells and a big tank. That's what we're getting.
Thank you. I motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland. A second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously, and we've taken a first major step towards construction of a new water treatment plant, which will benefit citizens for, literally, for decades to come. So thank you very much. Thank you. Council, while we're here, we're going to go ahead and take care of 12C. That's a warning, Ms. Waldron. We're moving on to item 12C. Consider action to approve Resolution number R2022-68 to place a proposal to adopt a tax rate for fiscal year 2022-2023 on the September 13, 2022 meeting agenda action item and schedule a public hearing on the proposal and providing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So, good evening. We're here to talk about a proposed tax rate. And so I'm just going to go through a couple of items here, and then we will dig into the numbers. So just for clarity, I've given you all the PowerPoint in front of you, just so that you have it. I felt like that would be a little bit easier. I felt like that would be a little bit easier to see. But we are going from fiscal 2022, 1,94, no, 1 billion 94 million, to almost one, a little over 1.4 billion. So, valuations have definitely increased.
So, the tax base is the value of all the property within the city limits?
Yes, and so, the tax base increase for existing property increased 18.7%. So, we're not including the new value in that 18.1, 18.7%. Just to note, when we run the tax calculations, there's a lot of properties still under review. I think we had almost a little over 82 million that was still under review. We do not use all that value when we're calculating these tax rates, because I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't really know where those values are going to land. So, these numbers are based on 55% of the under review. Just to go over very quickly, I know we have a lot of new council members with us. This is the first round for, for y'all. On the tax rate, no new revenue tax rate is defined as the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue than last year's base, but you also have to consider, there's a lot of other factors that go into that calculation as well. There's court appeal decisions that get factored in, and there's also lost exemptions that we have to factor in. The, the tax rate calculation spreadsheet is actually quite complex. The voter approval tax rate is the rate, is the maximum rate that is allowed without voter approval. There's a lot of other complicating factors, but this is a very simple way of stating this, and it's, and it's basically the, the no new revenue MNO rate increased by 3.5% plus your calculated INS tax rate, which is your debt rate. The proposed tax rate is the, the rate required to publish and hold a public hearing if it's greater than the lower of the no new revenue rate or the voter approval rate. And the adopted, adopted tax rate is the rate that you will adopt in September. So, this page is just really going over all of these different rates, and I know it can be confusing, because there's a lot of them, but these are all of the rates that were calculated when we ran the calculation worksheets. And so, our no new revenue tax rate as a whole is .4887. The proposed tax rate, which has been plugged into this model and to these calculations, is .5238. The voter approval tax rate is also .538. The no new revenue MNO tax rate is .3166. The proposed MNO rate is .3276, and the debt service rate is being calculated at .1962, which is slightly below our debt rate from last year. The proposed MNO tax rate that we're speaking of tonight is, would generate around 142,000 more revenue than the no new revenue tax rate. I have given you two different calculations on the additional revenue that would be calculated if you were to go with the proposed rate or go with the no new MNO tax rate. So, this first screen is for the proposed, and we've split it out between the existing properties and the new properties. So, for the existing property, it would be generating an additional $456,000. The new property is generating a little over $555,000, and it breaks it out between MNO and INS. On the second page, this is if we were to accept the no new MNO tax rate plus the debt rate that's being calculated, and so, the existing property would generate a little over 315,000. New property would generate almost 544,000. This page right here is going to be part of the notice, it was in your packet, and so it's basically the, the tax, the certified tax rules give us the average homestead taxable value, which is the 255,000. We're just applying the tax rate to that to let y'all, you know, kind of see the difference between the rates and how that would affect the average homestead taxable value. So, it's about $28 difference between the no new revenue MNO rate and the voter approval rate.
Didn't our budget book say 20?
So, the budget book is based on preliminary values. These are based on certified values. I didn't actually have the certified values till after the proposed...
No, no, I understand. Okay, thank you.
So, there, there was a little change in value. The bottom part shows the total tax rate is actually going down by almost 10%, but then, of course, the homestead taxable value is going up by almost 13%. The average homestead, it's an increase of the $28 difference, and it also gives you the comparison between the tax levy on the properties between 2021 and 2022. So, this, obviously, we proposed a rate in the proposed budget, we proposed an amount of tax revenue. This is really separate and apart from that, this is just talking about the rate itself. And so, our suggestion tonight is to go ahead and publish a notice of proposed tax rate at the, at the .5238, which is 3.5% over the no new revenue MNO rate, to be able to give you flexibility during the workshops that we're about to have on the 16th and 17th. It doesn't mean that you're going to adopt that rate, it just means that we are going to post and hold a public hearing on that rate. The other alternative is that City Council can go ahead and go with the no new revenue MNO rate plus the debt rate that's being calculated at the .5128. It's a lot of words and numbers. So, that's what's in front of you tonight.
Tracy, is this one of those where they have to, the motion has to be very specifically worded or not?
Unless it's in the staff report that way, otherwise, the motions when we actually adopt the tax rate are very specific.
Okay, yeah, so I'm get, I'm scooting ahead, huh? Okay, Counsel, are you clear on, really, at the end of the day, do you want to post and publish .5238 and have some flexibility, or do you want to post and publish .5128, which is what the budget book is essentially based on?
The budget book is based on different rates, but it's actually less revenue than both of these rates would generate.
So, the way to have the maximum flexibility is based on information she has now that she didn't have when we first got the budget book, is the, the highest it can be without going out to an election is .5238, and then we can do two days of workshops, she'll give us all kinds of, if you do this, this is exactly what the rate is, and we can adopt something that's .5238 or lower when we actually do the, this is the tax rate, but we cannot do anything higher.
Right, which is really why we've done, this has been what we've done the last several years, and it's because you can't adopt anything higher than what you propose. So, you can always come down, you can always adopt less, but you cannot go more.
Counsel, do you have clarity on what we're saying? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, what will be done with the number that we adopt as the rate today?
It'll be published in the...
It'll be posted.
That's what's posted. We're having a public hearing at this rate.
Okay, and then, we will determine the actual rate during the budget process, and it can be lower but not higher?
Yes.
Correct? And then, that rate that we determine in the budget process, how is it ratified?
Oh, it's very, very specific words, and it'll be done on September 20th. That's why we're having a council meeting on the 20th and not on the 27th, because it has to be so many days before this and that, and full moons and all kinds of things are involved.
You will approve a budget that night, and then you will approve a tax rate.
Okay.
And they have to be in a certain order, and there's lot, many, many rules that we will follow absolutely to the letter of the law. Happy to entertain a motion?
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lee?
So, I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. So, if we adopt the .5128...
Councilmember Lee, please don't say adopt.
We're not adopting...
I'm sorry, wrong, wrong...
We're proposing a tax rate tonight.
So, my question is, is if we, you're asking us to approve that proposal?
A notice.
The notice, then, that's what I want to be clear on.
A notice of proposed tax rate.
Now, and then what's the alternative if we don't, if we don't approve the notice for that, if it's lower? I guess I got a little confused.
So, if we, if we notice at .5128, no matter what we talk about in the budget workshops, we cannot go above .5128.
Right.
If we notice for .5238, and we have the workshops, we can approve and finally adopt a tax rate that's .5238 or any number lower than that. So, if at .5128, if we're like, oh, we, we should have one of those, and give me one of these, and we move some things around, and it's like, ma'am, we really need to be .5129, we couldn't do that if we had published at .5128.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you can't go up at all, you can only go down. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I move to approve.
Posting?
Posting at this rate, so we can always lower it.
Point, .5238? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers that we post...
Second.
A rate of .5238, and a second from Councilmember Lee. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Kirkland? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion's unanimously approved, and we have a rate to publish. Let's, we're just doing things backwards, let's go backwards. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like polled? Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from the July 26, 2022 Regular Meeting. Item 11B, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2022-19, Approving a Zoning Concept Scheme for 2.395 acres of Farm Lot 62, changing the zoning for 2.395 acres out of Farm Lot 62 east of Main Street from P2 rural to P4 mix, located east of Pecan Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Adoption, Repeller, Severability and Enforcement, Proper Notice and Meeting, and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 11C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2022-70 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving a Public Improvement Plan Agreement with Hunt Communities for the Colony Mud 1F, Section 2, as attached in Exhibit A, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing for a Repelling Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Crouch?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes, thank you, Counsel. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. We're on Citizen Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for Citizen Comments?
No, ma'am.
We are done with Citizen Comments. We're on 9A, because we're going backwards tonight.
Receive Presentation on Fiscal Year 22 Third Quarterly Report. Assistant City Manager Gleason, you have an opportunity to endear yourself to Counsel by briefly going over the quarterly report and hitting highlights.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be quick. Madam Mayor, City Council, Acting City Manager, we are going to do this quick, fast, and in a hurry. Everything you need to know is in the, in the written quarterly report. We are getting close to that 150-page mark, so for that, I am sorry. Capital Improvement Projects, big things that occurred. Wastewater Collection System Part 1 is done, so that is very exciting. We just did the notice to proceed for Part 2, so construction will start this month. That's super exciting. I wanted to point out that we did beef up our Main Street data that we are reporting in the quarterly report, so please take some time to look through that and look at all the hard work that the Main Street Board and all their committees have been working on. We have contracted with the Retail Coach, who the EDC uses, to do cell phone analytics, and so we now have more data than we ever have before. We're excited about that. Number of customers in the district last quarter were 129,000, and those are cell phones that are within the district for more than 15 minutes. It's not a perfect science, so it would count people who work in the district and are there all day, or if you live in the district, like upstairs above one of the buildings. But we did take out the intersection at Chestnut and Main to make sure that we weren't counting people sitting in traffic. We, of those 129 visitor, or customers, we had 366 visitors, which means if I, as a customer, came three times during the quarter, that's why you have more visits than customers. So, that's exciting data of...
Assistant City Manager, because some people may be just listening, there wasn't 129, there were 129.7,000.
I apologize, yes.
It, it's...
Yes.
Okay.
129.7,000 and 366.1,000, lots of people. So, percentage of Bastrop residents are 20%, and those are within Bastrop County. So, that means the rest come from out Bastrop County. That is why we are so thankful for our partnership with Visit Bastrop. They do a great job really representing our way of life to our visitors, so we're thankful. Average day is 116 minutes. That is where the Main Street Board is really digging in to increase average days downtown, because the longer people stay, the more money they spend in our small businesses. We have, for the first time ever, a building vacancy rate. Building vacancy rate is hard for us to measure, because in a lot of downtowns, you have 15 buildings. So, it's easy to say, three of them are empty, here's my vacancy rate. Our, our downtown, we have one of the largest Main Street districts in Texas. It's 62 city blocks and almost 200 businesses strong, so it's hard to know all those little nooks and crannies whether they are full or not. So, the Main Street Board has undertaken a project over the last year, they worked with the Planning Department, on 911 addresses, because that is how we know that there may be suites within buildings that we had no idea about, and then they have dug in to see who is in them. So, they are working very hard on now tracking that vacancy rate. We're proud to have that data. Our goal for a healthy, thriving downtown is an 8% vacancy rate, and that is per the National Main Street, National Main Street Program. So, we were, we're going to keep fighting to get that down. So, we have some new businesses coming in some buildings that have long been vacant, so we're thankful for that. Yes, sir.
Is that number, it's getting better over time, or it's going down over time?
So, this is our, so this is our first quartered hat number, because it's been a long project to get our building inventory.
So, it's the best it's ever been?
It is, yes. It's the only it's ever been. I will tell you just my senses, using my eyeballs, I do think our vacancy rate has been dropping. We actually filled buildings during COVID and have continued to fill buildings, so hopefully, next quarter, we see that number going down. So, it takes a village to fill buildings. Five new businesses, one business expansion. I also... I also wanted to point out, the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center, they are on track to double in revenue, what we made last year. We know we were still coming out of COVID, but they are going to hit probably the 200,000 mark in revenue. Their kind of keystone year was 19, and they made 250,000, so they are on the way up. And we are very thankful, you know, Visit Bastrop, this year took on helping us to sell the convention center to non-locals, and they brought in $50,000 alone of that 200,000. So we are thankful to them and that partnership. I'm not going to mention anything else about Visit Bastrop, only because you guys have a joint meeting coming up, so I don't want to steal their thunder by going over their data. Managed growth, we always talk about this. We had another strong quarter for permits. I wanted to note that of the permits, 86% of them were issued. Of the remaining 14%, 4% were in review at the time of this snapshot. And again, this is the end of the day quarter, so it may have been reviewed the next day or the next week, but it, they were all reviewed within our set time parameters. 8% were turned in incomplete, and 2% needed additional development processes for Platts. 53% were issued, 33% were in review, 14% were incomplete. So those two have since worked through the system. We were asked to include previous quarters, so I thought we did very well. If you look at all of the outstanding permits for fiscal year 2022 from Q1 and Q2, we only had three permits that had not been resolved. That's less than 1% of all the permits we had issued. And of Platts, we had two Platts that were still outstanding, and that's less than 5% of all the Platts that we received. So items are moving through the Planning Office and are getting issued very quickly. Uniquely Bastrop, these are our assets. The big thing I wanted to point out about the assets is this quarter was the highest quarter for all of our assets in the last two years. So they are getting to know and welcoming more visitors than they ever have before. They are working hard together, they are partnering, they are supporting each other. We, through the city, are working to promote their activities. They are included in all of our community engagement items, so if you can pick up one of these flyers, they have tons of great things coming up. You also get all the city programming, so we have another round of movies in the park coming up in the fall. They are also included in our newsletter, currently our Community Engagement Newsletter. You can sign up for that on the website, or you'll find QR codes around our city buildings. They are sent quarterly, but starting in October, we're going to send them monthly, because they're so long, because there's so much stuff. So we figured a monthly sendout would give people more recent access to the cool stuff going on in our town. The Public Library, I know in your weekly memos, you've been getting updates on the Public Library Summer Reading Program. I wanted to point out that it's crazy at the Public Library right now. So even if you compare it to the summer of last year, they've had 18,000 visitors to the library over this quarter, and this isn't even the end of summer reading, so next quarter's numbers will be huge, too. They also had 26,000 materials that were circulated and checked out. So compared to last quarter, or last year this quarter, was 19,000. So they, it has been wild and crazy over at the library, so please go take care of that team, they are very tired. So they like donuts and cookies, and so we like to drop them off and just let them know that we appreciate their hard work during summer reading and they're doing a great job. I also wanted to point out the Recreation Center. The Recreation Center this quarter surpassed 400 members, which was really exciting for us. We know that that was largely because of, in the summer, we have swimming. We have swim class and we have the adult fitness classes, so we have more signups to do swimming. And then we know then, the next quarter, it will go down, but we were really excited to surpass that 400 mark. And the team is working really hard on finding ways to keep some of those people that signed up for swimming, now bring them engaged into the building. So we're doing a lot of children-heavy programming, since a lot of our signups during the summer are children for our swim lessons. Lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to point out our volunteer hours. At the end of the third quarter, we have already doubled our volunteer hours for last year. We have said before that it takes a small army to serve a community, and that does not just include staff, we are just a small percentage of those who serve the community, y'all include it. And so we are so thankful for our volunteers, they work so hard at building the type of community they want to be a part of. So if you have people you meet that come up to you, or you have friends, or you have family, please encourage them to volunteer at the city, whatever they're interested in, we have a place for them. So we are just so thankful for our volunteers, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Can you go back a slide?
Certainly.
Are we missing the data for the Police Department on last quarter? I mean, surely they had zero volunteers that one month, that one quarter?
So last quarter, when we got that number in, I reached out to Chief to ask, like, is this correct? And he came back and said it was correct, so I don't know if perhaps citizens on patrol, there wasn't an event, they worked, or, I'm not sure why it's zero, but I did double-check it, because I thought it was.
Okay, it just seems strange how they had so many volunteers each quarter, and then all of a sudden, nobody showed up at the Police Department, so I was just curious. Just wondering, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, any other questions for Ms. Gleason? So the, and I know before, and I know it's a ton of work. Before, we've had the link, this time, we didn't have the link, correct?
The link on this, was on the staff report?
Okay, I, I didn't either.
Oh, okay. I'll go back and check.
Madam Secretary, do you want to? Because I looked for it and didn't.
I believe the link was in the staff report.
Okay, I'll, we'll double-check that. Excellent, excellent. So, Council, if you have questions, you can always send them to Ms. Gleason after the meeting today, and certainly if we need to talk about it at the, at a future council meeting, if there's something that you want changed, they're always interested in having the feedback. Just realize that it takes a whole lot of effort to put it together, so it's important that we're including the information that's helpful to you. All right, we don't need a motion on this, so if there's no further questions, good job, Ms. Gleason, thank you so much. All right, we're on our final item of the evening, which is item 8A, receive presentation on the proposed amendments to the Rules of Procedure for the City Council Boards and Commissions. It's the lilac-colored one now. Mr. Borquist, you going to take care of us on this one?
No, Mayor and Council, this is Ann Franklin's item, so, yeah, no. I already tried that earlier. Mayor, Council, what you have in front of you is my compilation of some of the feedback that I have received from City Council members or staff. This is an exercise we go through each summer following the May elections to give Council either ask questions or suggest changes to our Rules of Procedure. So Mayor, if you'd like, I can just kind of go through them. What you have is a highlighted red, red line diversion. If I skip over something you want to talk about, please holler, but I'll try to be expeditious, given the hour.
Council, we're on page 17 of the packet, is a good place to start.
So I'm looking at section 1.3 regarding amending the rules, and how many votes it takes to amend the rules. Do we want to leave it to where it's always going to be, three of the five? Or do you want to modify it to be a simple majority of whoever happens to be present at a meeting?
So Council, I count in a quorum, the mayor always counts in a quorum, so you could have three council members and a mayor have a quorum for a meeting, and the majority then would be of the people voting, so it would only be three. So it would take, two people would be considered the majority, correct, Mr. Borquist?
Correct.
So there's been discussion in the past that when you have a full council, that it takes three people to pass something. And so if you put yourself in a position where only two council members are required to pass something, are you really getting full representation? So that's, that's really what's on the table.
So Mayor, I submitted this particular comment, and it was simply for clarification, because it wasn't clear to me the language of three of the five voting members and what that would mean if someone was absent. I, I think what I would like to propose is that we say something along the lines of it can be changed by a minimum of, or by three votes. So what that means is, in the model that you prescribed, when two people were absent, you could still change the rules with three votes.
Correct.
And I, I brought this up just because I was like, hey, that wording seems funny to me, and it's not clear what it means when you have fewer people, and I don't want to prevent Council from changing rules because one person is sick.
Because somebody's sick.
Right, yeah. So I, that's why I put it on there, as a, as a discussion point.
Do you have some proposed wording based on that? That just takes three votes and just leave the out of five off?
What I would propose is, we get through this tonight with whatever direction Council wants to give me informally, and I will bring back a fresh draft for your next meeting that you can either vote on as part of consent, or yank it from consent if there's particular conversation. So if the, if the goal here is to have a minimum of three, regardless of how many is present, I will make that change in the next draft.
Council, this is a workshop, so we're, we're, you don't have to wait to be recognized. Let's not try to all three, all six of us talk at the same time, but the, this is one of those general nods will help out and know.
I can see bobbing heads and smiles or frowns from across the room.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, moving on to 2.1, this is just a clarification point, that Rosenberg's Rules of Order is a preferred source of guidance for matters not addressed specifically in these rules. Rosenberg was adopted by the City Council long ago, but it's not something that we use strictly, and I don't think we need to, but when in doubt, that's a resource we can turn to. I think 2.1 makes that more clear.
Anybody got any heartburn? No heartburn?
Again, 2.3, talking about additional guidance from Rosenberg, I think that's self-explanatory. When we get to 2.5, it's actually bringing these rules into compliance with what our charter says. Okay? 2.7, workshops, citizen comments. This is one we have to discuss periodically, because the law is kind of vague on this. We have work sessions, we have workshops, they're very common in municipalities, but the Texas Open Meetings Act doesn't talk about them at all. A workshop or a work session is just another meeting. And if it's taking place at a time that's not your normal meeting time, then it's a special meeting, but it's still a meeting. Normally, when cities, counties, schools have work sessions, they only have, if they have any citizen comment, it's invited comments on a specific topic. But the Open Meetings Act now says, citizens have a right to speak at any city council meeting on open session agenda items, either before the council brings them up, or when the council brings them up. So even if we have just a special work session sometime, or workshop, citizens technically have a right to speak. So the question is, do we need to put anything in our Rules of Procedure regarding putting citizen comments on agendas? We don't have to, they still have a right to speak. Do you all want us to put citizen comments even on work session or workshop agendas?
Madam Secretary, we've pretty much been doing that for fear of violating the state, and we may have been overly cautious, is what I'm hearing the attorney tell us. Council, it's pretty easy to have it on the agenda, but as the, Mr. Borquist is pointing out, we don't have to. So it's, no one cares, just say what you want.
Leave it like it is.
Okay, so even workshop items, we just have a citizen's comment. I, I prefer that as well, it just makes it real clear to everybody, happy to hear from you. Is that helpful to you, Alan?
It does, thank you, ma'am.
Excellent.
3.2, regarding reading of the captions. I sit a safe, striking distance away from our City Secretary on purpose, because I often ask things like this. Do we want the mayor to have to read the caption of these items? Or do you want to change it to have the City Secretary do so?
I would, because I don't, I'm only mayor till May, who knows? Some people like reading them, some people don't like reading them. So I would say the mayor, the mayor clearly announces, and that the caption is read by the mayor or their designee, something like that, that, because it, maybe it's Mayor Pro Tem, maybe it's the City Manager, maybe it's the City, just give them an option to opt out, because maybe I have a cold and I don't want to read that night, you know?
Well, that's, one reason I bring this up is because of the scenario where it may be the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, who may or may not want to read these things, and may think somebody else should be doing that while the presiding officer focuses on something else.
Is it best to make the designee the City Secretary, or does, or can it be designees in case there's?
No, it's Jennifer Bills. She's, she's the one that wants to read.
Whoever's sitting the furthest away from the dais, I think, is going to have. It really is Council's discretion, and in some cities, it is the City Secretary who reads these things. It changes city to city, or who's sitting in the mayor's chair.
For me, if it's the mayor or designee, that's maximum flexibility, and we don't have to try to work it out.
Got it.
Okay?
3.3.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers feels like that was a personal dig, oh, she said, oh, now you're going to take care.
Nothing that ever is said in this chamber is ever personal, Mayor Pro Tem. 3.3, a clarification point, when it comes to basic motions, that multiple motions may be made on the same agenda item and voted on sequentially. The point being, there was some misperception perhaps, that once there's been a motion made on an item, whether it passes or fails, can there be other motions made on that item? And so this doesn't really change the rules, it's just a clarifying point.
Which we did this very main.
Which you did tonight, yes, ma'am. So I don't think this changes the rules.
And I, I suggested this one, and it, and it went back to just a conversation that Councilperson Plunkett and I had had a long time ago, because there was sort of a, wait a second, if, if this fails, does that mean we just have to go on to the next agenda item and can't? Like, we just, we were ignorant, we didn't know.
You should have watched more council meetings or served on a board before you ran for council.
So, so anyway, that was, that was the, the context. But the TML conference that we went to, where they did, that's where it was sort of like, oh.
So does this clear up, because I'm not trying to open a can of worms, but if you make a motion to approve and it fails, then it is not approved, so it is denied. And if we are then requiring that we have a motion to deny, that then has to pass so that you have an official, that is a lot of extra motions and a lot of extra minute keeping. So is this the place to clarify that? Because it's never needed to be clarified before.
No, Mayor, but this is related to that, this is a setup for that to come, to come later.
Okey-dokey, so I'll hold that till we get there.
That's in another place, Alan?
Yes.
Okay, I missed it, thank you.
At least it was supposed to be, if I missed it. I'll find it. So Council, you're okay with that, clarifying what's already the case, you could have multiple motions on one item. 3.5, there were some questions raised about the process. I think that tonight was an example of there was a thorough and healthy discussion before there was actually a call for votes. I don't think there's any reason to add anything more to the rules to do that, but at least one council member mentioned that, so this is the placeholder if we wanted to have that sort of discussion.
So Council, this is where sometimes people have strong feelings about something. You make a speech, you make a motion, and there, the way our rules are set up, it's like, well, I'd like to have a conversation, I'd like to hear from the citizens before there's a motion. So some of it's just kind of common courtesy to make sure that something's thoroughly vetted. If you don't do this, you can end up with a motion that even the person who made the motion wishes they hadn't made, because they heard something extra. So I think that was your intention, correct, Mr. Borquist? Just the, just to emphasize the fact that there'd be a full discussion?
Yes.
Any, any heartburn, everybody okay? All right, I'm seeing nods.
And Councilman Kirkland, I guess you're right, it's not in this. And Councilman Kirkland, I guess you're right, it's not in this, it was in my transmittal email or my response email. So Mayor, I think I was mistaken. There, there has been a separate conversation, Mayor and Council, about what do you do with motions to approve that fail? We had an item a few weeks ago regarding the Historic Landmark Commission vote, and it was my opinion that a motion to approve that gets seconded, there's a vote and it fails to pass, is in effect a successful motion to deny. That's been my interpretation and that's been the way BASTROP has long operated. There was some question about whether or not that is true. I did some legal research, there's no case law on that in Texas, there's no statutes on that in Texas. So when you don't see clear sources of law, I often reach out to colleagues who may have a different position. I reached out to professionals at firms like mine, but instead, they represent school districts, or they represent county commissioners' courts, or water districts. I also reached out to what I would think is a senior city secretary parliamentarian in the state and asked that question, do they have a source or a position that I'm not familiar with? And uniformly, they told me that a failed motion to approve is treated as a motion to deny that passes and no additional motions are necessary. So that is still my opinion and, and that is what I think we can use going forward. But if the city council wants to do something different for all of our boards and commissions, this is a good time to address that and make that decision. My only reluctance to requiring that following a failed motion to approve, we must then have a motion for something else, it's hard to compel a board to do something. If they don't want to make a motion, what, what are you going to do? And while I think we as a city council with your staff in the room can be diligent on such things, I have no faith that some of our smaller boards, committees, or, or commissions are going to, to be, have that presence of mind when it comes to parliamentary procedure. So happy to have the conversation, but I, I don't know that there is a need to fix that unless the city council thinks so, so.
So tonight, for me, tonight was a perfect example. If there's contingencies on it and the contingencies don't pass, then you don't have a, a true, it's, it's an up or down. But if you, if it is a motion to approve and that motion doesn't pass, then how can anyone think it's approved? The motion to approve didn't pass, so.
So I, I have two comments. So the Historic Landmark Commission issue was a motion to approve with conditions, not a motion to approve. And when I spoke with one of our friendly judges in town about that, he said that because it wasn't a clean motion to approve, that he couldn't assume it was a denial.
I've talked to that same friendly judge who said that he doesn't practice municipal law.
Yes.
And that he would yield to whatever Mr. Borquez said because
Fair enough.
That's the person who deals with this sort of stuff all the time.
And in my research, the, Alan, you mentioned the parliamentarian thing?
Yes, sir.
When you go and, you know, Google this topic, what you find is that in the Roberts Rules of Order community, it's exactly the way you described. And they say, look on page, you know, 452 in this chapter and in this paragraph, it says that. And so it is specified in the Rules of Order and so, uh, that's why I brought it up here is, is so that we can, we don't use Roberts Rules of Order, so what a parliamentarian would say about those rules is informative but not applicable. And so it, it represents in effect, uh, a gap in, in interpretation that I was asking that we fill. And, um, and if it's not just a clean motion to approve, i- it's hard to say that that is a denial. For instance, if there were conditions on the approval. And I had submitted some language to you that, that said that the chair of the committee could move on with the agenda if no other option, if no other motions were offered. But that in order to affirmatively take action on an item, the board has to pass a motion. Something along those lines.
I, I believe that you're making this harder than it needs to be, is my personal opinion on, on this. You can submit some language and Alan can, can put it in. Counsel, any other comments on Mr., on Councilmember Kirkland's position, Mayor Protem Rogers?
Can we not just state somewhere in here that if a motion doesn't pass, then that is a denial? Can we just make that statement in our policies and procedures?
We can, and I drafted some language along that line, but chose not to put it in here until we had this council discussion.
Well, if that's going to make him happy.
To see what most of you wanted to do. I think we can say that a failed motion to approve is construed as a motion to deny unless other motions are made. Part of the challenge of this whole thing is that there is pressure on the presiding officer to make sure the board is clear on what they're approving or what just passed. And we went through that tonight and I think we did have clarity, so I have no doubt the minutes is going to reflect it. But the kind of uncertainty that Councilman Kirkland is talking about is, is supposed to be really resolved by the presiding officer. All in favor of having more training for our presiding officers and trying to drive home that point to chairs and vice chairs, that that is a key part of their duty is to manage those votes and everyone walks away knowing what was done.
Well, and I think that the clarity on what you're voting on is already mentioned in our rules and procedures. And, you know, to your point, you can train them, you can lead them to water, but you can't make them make them. And I know our, our acting city manager and staff liaisons, that's part of, they try to help those boards and say, hey, I, I'm, I know Ms. Bills has with planning and zoning, trying to assist with that. But Mayor Protem Rogers, are her comments, Alan, you feel like you can come back with some type of verbiage we can take a look at?
Yes, I'll draft it and I, I will send it, it'll be in the packet, but for sure, I'll talk to you, Mayor Protem and Councilman Kirkland before I do that.
I'm all for clarity, I just don't want to overcomplicate it to where now it's not clear because we.
And if it were a simple, if a motion to approve fails, that's a denial? Actually, I'm, I'm actually fine with that. But a motion to approve with conditions fails is a denial I'm less okay with. And so that's why I was thinking, well, goodness, there's too many variations here because you can have an infinite number of conditions. And, um, and clearly some of them would be unacceptable because there's an infinite number of them. I just, that's, that's why I went down that road, because it was more in the area of the specific thing that, that we, that I was reading in the minutes and it, trying to understand how to interpret the failure of a motion to approve with conditions. And if it was just to approve, I wouldn't have had the same issue.
Well, from, from the liaison that sat in that room, that all of those board members that voted felt they were denying it. So your board actually.
And I believe the applicant didn't think it was accidentally approved either, correct?
No, I'm just saying, but I think that's what they felt. Those, those board members that voted on that vote felt they were denying that, whether it was with conditions or not, they were flat out denying it.
Let's, my suggestion is, let's let Mr. Borquez take a shot at wording and we'll all have an opportunity to review that in our packet and we'll, we can have some further discussion there.
Okay.
Because it's getting late and we're all getting tired and I don't want it to dissolve into a not, not good spot. And I think we're so close to being done, correct?
We're so close. 3.8, that third paragraph, inserting the word regular meeting. So if ever you pass or approve something and you want to come back and reconsider it, let's clarify that's at the next regular meeting and not at perhaps some intervening budget workshop or something like that. So that should be straightforward.
Alan, can we make an exception to it? Like a meeting called specifically for the purpose of this?
Makes sense.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, an unhappy trash vendor shoots someone in the parking lot and we want to take away the contract we just granted them and I don't want to wait two weeks to do it. I don't know, I mean, just, it, it just, uh, just, you know, if, if you explicitly put on an agenda item and you, you call a meeting for the purpose of doing this, whatever the action was, that should also be allowed, I would think, in addition to the next regular meeting.
You know, there's, there's pros and cons, only because sometimes there's gamesmanship and things like that.
Okay.
Not that any member of this council could do it.
No, that's fair.
But something passes, I mean, I actually had this happen in a town not far from here this year. Something passed at a meeting, people went away, couple councilmembers called a special meeting, knowing the councilmember who sponsored that item was going to be out of town. They came back in, motion to reconsider and undid what was done.
Okay, I retract it.
That's politics and that's, that's legal and it's fine. I, I just, I don't know if that's what you want to do.
I don't want to, I don't want to deal with that. I, never mind.
Uh, I'm just adding further down on 3.8, if you're going to do a motion to reconsider, at least talk to your city attorney, because maybe you will have entered a contract or done something that has illegal implications. That should be easy to do. Going to Article 4. In the past, we referenced Dropbox, now we reference OneDrive. I say just delete them all.
Yes.
Platformers may change faster than once a year. We like staying sharp in BASTROP. When it comes to presentations that are, that are made, I suggest limiting them to five minutes. And if the chair wants to allow something longer, they have some freedom to do so. That's just helping you manage your time at your meetings.
I think it's a really good idea. Anybody got any problems? Okay.
Uh, going to 4.7. This was referenced tonight also.
It's not so much a problem, but, um, what if you did want to give someone more than five minutes? I mean, are we going to set the timer on the five minutes or?
The presiding officer can, yeah.
Okay.
That's, the idea is you don't get to just stand up here and talk for an hour. You got five minutes to make your case. And if council asks you a question, of course, then, then that can happen and, and you can extend it. But it gives, we're letting folks know that you got five minutes to make your case.
And if we want to.
Yeah, and we can always interact with them. Rather than, well, it doesn't say that I have a time limit because everything else, when people are before council, there's a time limit.
Okay.
4.7, this also came up tonight. This is in your packet as it's new, but it's really from last year, these, or year before, some temporary changes we put in to deal with the pandemic and the fact that we didn't have open meetings with all these nice chairs sitting here. I'm recommending that we not have anyone from the dais reading public comments out loud into the record. Previously, we've had the mayor do that when there was no citizen comments live and in person. But as the city's lawyer, I think there's some risk involved in a public official reading somebody else's remarks that could be defamatory or, or something else. And so just like tonight, anything we got through the website or email in advance can be put at your seat so you can read them if you want to, to yourselves, and they will be part of the permanent file for this meeting, but not have any members of the public's comments read aloud.
And the, the, I'm, I'm all for that because some things, you'd be surprised what people write in a, in a comment. But at one point, there was a, the, the chair could summarize. I, that makes me nervous because now I'm summarizing what someone else wrote and I may not summarize it correctly. So, but, and I'm sure, Mr. Jobe, you've already written it down, we've got, we need to update our website for, definitely. But I think if they can't come and speak, I'm fine with us sharing. And I made a point with one of the citizens of saying, you know, citizen comments, it, it's not really a public statement, that, that's what Facebook's for, right? The, the point of citizen comments is to get the information to the people who are going to be voting. And for, for clarity, all of the citizen comments, as Mr. Borquez just said, that are filed online, you always get a copy of those. So you guys always have access to those. But I very much like clarifying this because we don't know if at some point we'll be shut down again and we'll have to do something different. You were so close, you almost made it through the whole meeting. But, um, but as long as we're clear, clearly making sure that what people's expectations are, because there may have been some people that thought, well, I, I didn't come down because I thought you were going to read them. If I'd known you weren't going to read them, I would have come down. So we'll get that cleared up on the website and let's make sure that we're clear on our rules and procedures. Does anybody have any grief with what Mr. Borquez is suggesting on this one?
All righty, going to 4.9. The question has come up about once an item is on an agenda, how does it get off the agenda? And so I threw out some possible language, that it can be removed by the request of the item sponsor, unless a majority of the council says, no, we want to keep it. And I asked some other questions here. This comes up sometimes, I haven't really seen it here, but where an applicant will put something forth over and over and over on the agenda and then they keep pulling it down. The applicant, the vendor, somebody else is asking for an item, we put it on there for them and they go, ah, no, we're not ready. They show up to the council meeting or they email the day of and say, pull it down. Okay, my opinion as the city's lawyer is, once you put an item on the agenda, it belongs to the city council. And it's up to the city council to decide whether to discuss it or not. That's where I start by default. Now with your rules, you can modify that and say who can pull down an item. Otherwise, the presiding officer can say, no, we're not talking about that today, or only a majority of the council can say, motion to table, we're not going to talk about that. How would you all like to treat that subject?
So I can tell you guys, what we've done in practice for the last five years is, if it's on the agenda, city managers can pull it. They may say, staff got some different information, or the applicant just submitted something that, so, so sometimes I'll get a four o'clock call from the city manager, we need to pull these two items. Sometimes they're pulling them because the applicants called and said, we're changing, you know, it's, it's something that the applicant and staff are working together. I have always had the longstanding practice, I, I can remember one instance where there was a, going to be a decision on something and the council liaison to that board that, that pertained to the item wasn't going to be able to be at the meeting and ask for the item to be pulled. If you're a city council person and you have a vested interest in that item, you may, it may have been put on by a staff person, but if you're asking for it to be pulled, as mayor, I've been respectful of that and said, yeah, we'll pull it and put it on the next, we meet really often. But Alan's talking about an instance where if you're doing gamesmanship of trying to pull the item, do we need to have some clarity around what it takes? I would suggest that you always, um, a mayor can be overruled, but you ought to give the mayor the flexibility to be able to, to pull something off of the agenda. Because we're, you know, we've placed it, placed it on the agenda. But the idea of a sponsor, maybe it's something I don't want on, which I cannot, I have no memory of telling anybody they couldn't put something on the agenda. But if two council people have asked for it to be on the agenda because the mayor said, no, I don't want it on the agenda, it seems unfair that a mayor can pull it off if two council members have put it on. So I'm, you know, I don't know what for you, I don't, I don't want to make it a three paragraphs long, but, um, you know, maybe the mayor can pull it off unless there's a motion from council to not take it off and then that would be three votes and they, it, it's going to get talked about.
So just the mayor or the mayor, the city manager and the item sponsors? Any one of those three can pull it off?
I'm okay with those.
Unless the majority of council votes to keep it on?
You guys okay with that?
Okay.
Your mic's not on.
Correct. That still has the problem of the unfriendly mayor pulling something, not wanting to be discussed, put on by two council members.
Not if it was voted to stay on by the council, he said.
Right, but that would require three council members.
Well, I suggest you keep us friendly.
Well, it's going to take three council members to approve it, so if you, you got it on, but if you're not going to, you know.
If you have three votes, you're going to pass it.
But that's to discuss it, not, I mean, you, you can, you'd be taking away the right to discuss it.
No, you're right. You are, you're totally right.
Um, that's why, I mean, I kind of, I'm okay with the item sponsor, which could be those two city council members, or certainly could be the mayor or the city manager, you know.
Sometimes the, one of the, on the sponsorship, the, sometimes it's on there because it's come from another board and the actual sponsor, it gets a little weird, so.
Right. Oh, yeah, good point.
Okay, I will toy with it and come back with a, a more polished recommendation for next time.
I would advise all mayors to be friendly. It makes it a whole lot easier, this, put stuff on the agenda than if those people want it off, you know, postpone it.
5.3, citizen comments are limited to those speakers who have been acknowledged by the presiding officer and who speak from the dais. Just another effort, effort to cut down on people hollering from.
The cheap sheets.
I was going to say cheap seats, but I thought better of it. Online speaker cards.
Wait, wait, Mr. Borquez, do you mean acknowledged by the presiding officer and who speak from the?
Oh, yeah.
Podium or?
A podium is what I should have said. Yep.
Did you see how I pointed? Because I couldn't remember the word podium right now. Like, we knew dais was maybe not right. Yeah, so I'd say podium. And, and the microphone, you know how many people get irritated because they, they can't hear what?
You could just put from the microphone.
And usually, that's the good stuff.
Yeah, you could just put a microphone instead, in case we're having, you know, because sometimes we'll have.
Yeah, there you go, just at, at, at the designated microphone or something like that.
Yeah, designated, as opposed to the one they bring with them.
The karaoke mic, I have a karaoke mic. Okay.
What was the question? Are online speaker cards to be used to register comments, or should they also be used along with the cards filled out?
I got lost on this one.
I think we can use either one, right? They can fill out the online comment cards or in person as they did tonight.
That's correct.
And my notes here say that they have a choice.
I think we should make it as easy as possible for the citizens to give us feedback.
Okay. Anything more on that one, Ms. Franklin? 5.5, an applicant who has made a presentation to the council must again be recognized before being allowed to return to the podium to make additional comments or answer questions. Just more help to keep the applicants from prairie dogging out in the audience somewhere. Just because they've spoken once or made their presentation does not mean they get to just keep hopping up and returning to the microphone as long as they want.
So I have a question on this one. On here, it says 10 minutes, but I thought previously we were talking about presentations only being five minutes?
Yep.
But it's 10 minutes, under our current regs, it's 10 minutes for applicants versus just anybody else who makes a presentation?
I was just curious since we're.
Yeah, I thought the other one was applicant too, for five minutes. What page was that?
I just wanted them to be the same, whichever way we decide.
Presentations are limited to a maximum of five minutes. Oh, that, presentations are, that, that's under presentations, and this is applicant on an item for individual consideration.
Right, so but presentations are made by the mayor, city council, or staff? So that's.
I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're on the same time limit. I wasn't asking to change it, I just wanted us to make sure we have the same thing, that's all I'm asking.
So that means quarterly reports have to be limited to five minutes?
I was going to say, I, I think 4.4, we don't normally have applicants presenting. I think you take the five minutes off and you change the 10 minutes to five minutes on the applicant in the later on.
Okay.
Because like budgets, that'd mean a city manager has to present an entire budget in five minutes.
Yeah, leave it there, five minutes.
You say that like it's a bad thing?
Yeah, I want to put a font minimum on the, on the presentations. We're so close.
I don't have anything further.
The 10 minutes, so the applicant, we're going to go to five minutes and they can't bebop in, right? Okay, council, so, Mr. Borquez, we'll make those changes and we'll see it back. Do you want to workshop it one more time, or do you want to see a clean copy from that? Well, and we can vote on anything, even if it's under the workshop, correct, Mr. Borquez?
Yes.
If it's on the agenda, we have the ability to approve it? Do you guys think you have a lot more changes, or you think we're pretty close?
Pretty close.
Okay. Mr. Jobe, let's put it on for an item for individual consideration, it'll be a pretty clean copy. Any, any other comments for Mr. Borquez? All right, that, to the best of my knowledge, that means we are on item 13.
Well, I'd like to read the third table of motion here, it says, motion to adjourn.
There you go. I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Kirkland, looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. It is 10:28 and we are adjourned. Thank you, council. Everyone be safe going home tonight.